Good evening. The Rowerton Township Planning Board is now in session, please. Call to water. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board at the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Hunter County Democrat, the Courier News, the Star Ledger, and the Trenton Times. We are happy to have a new member joining us on the planning board this evening, Mr. Joe Lane. If you would step up to be sworn in by Mr. Toriello.
I, Joseph Lane.
Hi, Joseph Lane.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in the state of New Jersey.
And in the state of New Jersey.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of alternate to planning board members.
Perform all the duties of alternate to planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you, Joe. You can take a seat up here when you're ready, Joe. Okay, and with that, roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu. Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cavakiri.
Here.
Mr. Dennis Concanon, he is asked to be excused. Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski.
Here.
And I mean, now we can say Mr. Joseph Lane.
Here.
Board Professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. Joe Toriello.
Here.
Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Vacarella.
Here.
Township Engineer, Mr. Rakesh Darshi.
Right.
Township Landscape Architect, Mr. John Morgan Thomas.
Here.
Board Traffic Consultant, Mr. Jay Troutman.
Here.
And Board Planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell.
Here.
Very good. Thank you. I would like to ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence for the men and women in our armed forces.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next up, chairman's reports. I do not have anything to report on this evening. Board reports. Anybody have any comments this evening?
I'll just mention the Affordable Housing Subcommittee met, and we are continuing to go through the state-guided program to address any questions that are brought up. So we're moving along on that, and when we have an update, I will advise.
Excellent. Thank you. Engineers' comments? Okay, thank you. Planner's comments? Attorney's comments? Anything, Joe? Okay. Correspondents, this is the annual report we have this evening from the zoning board of adjustment, and we are happy to have two members, the chair and vice chair, who would like to address us on the report.
How's it feel to sit in those seats?
That's what.
You better grab that mic before Taylor.
Yeah, you better stick it to that microphone.
Does the mic work?
Does it work? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, and thank you very much for letting us present this evening. Under the provision of the municipal land use law and the ordinance of the township of Rowerton, as you know, the board of adjustment is required to provide an annual report, and this is based on the applications and appeals that we have heard over the year on the variances against the zoning ordinances. We are to review them and hopefully, if we find anything, to provide recommendations, which we do have tonight. So we'd like to go over that. I have a, I think you all have a copy of the board annual report, and so what we'd like to do tonight is go over some highlights, maybe read directly from it, and also add some commentary, and I'll turn it over to Russell to start.
So first of all, thank you so much for having us here, for inviting us, and I'm talking on behalf of chairperson as well as rest of the board members, who some of them happen to be there. On everybody's behalf, I want to thank us for this time. What I'm gonna do, like Chairwoman mentioned, we're gonna provide highlights. We're not gonna read through the document. We appreciate some of you have already read, and for those who haven't, we would urge you to do that because this was, it provides a good understanding in terms of what happens and the complexities and intensity of the board. So, to summarize, in 2024, we had convened 22 times. So every other, we don't take breaks, okay? So it was throughout, and there were some even special meetings because this guy makes us do those special meetings. There were 29 hearings over that period. Applications, we heard, 29 applications, we heard, and during those 22 meetings. And of that, the breakdown was 14 residential, 15 commercial. And commercials usually have more complexities, as we all know. And we'll go through some details of explaining the numbers of how everything broke down. The hearing process was not completed for four applications. And so when you look at the numbers, a lot of them, we'll talk about, instead of 29, 25, and then we'll go through how many resolutions within those 25 we were able to get to. The number of necessary public hearing session is directly linked to the scale and complexity of the development and redevelopment proposals involved. Most minor residential variance hearings were accomplished by one BOA meeting, while more complex development and redevelopment proposals required two or three BOA meetings to complete the public hearing. The BOA recognizes, the Board of Adjustment recognizes, the significant number and growing complexities of these applications that were submitted in 2024, consistent with the trends that have emerged over the past few years. So this has been going on for now, at least two, three years. At the close of 2024, the BOA began discussions on how to best manage the workload and increase proportion of commercial and industrial versus residential applications. So with that, I may ask the chairperson to go over our resolutions, and then I'll take over from there.
Okay.
Yep.
So moving on to the resolutions, as I'm sure you're not aware, we were able to have a new member join, Lorette Cortina. She is a retired planner from Somerset County, which greatly helped.
Good addition, right? Good addition.
Yeah. And so she was able to and wanted to review the resolutions and help us provide this report. And so with her diligent assessment, this is what we have. So I just wanna, I'll read some of it, and we'll talk through some of it. Okay, so 25 of the 29 applications heard involved resolutions that were approved by the Board of Adjustment. Of the approved resolutions, 18 involved variances. Six of the 18 resolutions granting variances involve land and contain regulated environment features, conservative areas, adding to the complexity and time involved in hearing from some applications. The remaining seven were resolutions for moralizing modifications, time extension, certifications, and interpretations. So in the report, you will see two charts on the report, and one of them just breaks down the type of variances, just to give a picture. The other one talks about the number of conditions. For those who don't, might have limited knowledge of the Board of Adjustments, when we talk about conditions, you're basically talking about conversations, working through issues. So during the, during the process, the presentation process, and especially on the residential side, which, as Russell mentioned, we have reconfigured and now take the residential application separate from the commercial, which allow them to hopefully get through one meeting rather than several meetings, which can be very challenging to the residents. So when you look at the conditions, you're looking at how we're working with them. Now, some residents might think that's a lot. They're not used to the process, and so when we have conversations between the board professionals and the applicant, it seems like we are, I don't know if their expectation is they're just gonna come before the board and get stamped. You know, I agree with everything you said. So the conversation may be frustrating for some of them, but in others, it's educational. And so I believe that we are, it's been helpful. But as you can see, when you see less than 10 or one at 50 or 60, that's a lot of conditions. And so it's usually on the commercial side, but again, I just wanna highlight the residential side because sometimes they don't understand what's happening. So I just wanna move over to the attachment, which is the rest of what Lorette had provided. And I'm gonna skip over the first chart first. The second chart provides a breakdown of the type of variances. And as you can see, there were 45 C and 13 D. And then the next charts break down those variances, first C and then D. So it's really just a count, just giving you a picture of what goes on. Followed by ordinance exceptions, demolitions, prior inconsistencies, and non-conformances. I wanna talk a minute about the prior inconsistency and non-conformance. So half of the resolutions fell into this. So what happens is when an application comes in, our professionals obviously do the assessment. And what we're finding out is that as they do the assessment, what was planned, previously agreed upon, against the as-built, is not, is not in sync. There's gaps. And so what happens is people have to come back. So it causes a lot of churn and a lot of conversations about what the Board of Adjustment does, and it's, we are not the police, but it seems like we are stopping things. They have to come back, they have to apply, they have to, you know, so the whole process is new to them, and so it's sometimes laborious. So I just wanted to talk through that, give you some context there. The first chart is really only summarizing what the Board of Adjustment has accomplished this year, and I just wanna highlight the reuse of existing buildings and indoor storage facility. It gives a context of what we've tried to, what we've accomplished through the applications, and I'll turn it back to Russell.
Sure, yeah. So one other comment about reformatting. Last year, in fact, Mayor Scott Sipos at time was getting a lot of complaints from the residential applications. That's taking too long. We're waiting for a long time before we're heard. So what Cynthia mentioned, in it, before that, before we made the change, we would have residentials and industrial applications, commercial together, and sometimes they would only get hour or half an hour, and we couldn't finish residential because we would have to jump into commercial applications. So by reformatting, not only we are completing those pretty quickly during the session, but also we have accelerated. So the wait time for residential applications, as you will see in the 2025 report, has gone down significantly. So that's a very positive thing for the citizens. Moving along, the other thing which you have seen in the document is about zoning districts, and there are numbers there broken down. The only thing I would highlight there of the 18 resolutions, you will see five of them were for our three single-family residentials. And so BOA and the planning board, some of you, we worked together, have evaluated the need for clarification of this, our three zoning district provisions based on the information which was provided. So I'm not gonna go into those details, but at least just wanted to make sure that we do take these numbers. It's just not numbers. It's like, what do we do with that? One final comment I would wanna make about concerning the 18 resolutions that were granted, variances adopted by the BOA in 2024. This is pretty interesting data, is there were 88, and he'll vouch that, 88 individuals provided testimony during the associated public hearing, 88. And so why, I mean, if you think about the complexity, on average, six individuals per application provided testimony. And it would be ranging from as low as two to three for residential applications, minor residential applications, to seven to 10 individuals for the major non-residential application heard during 2024. We asked Loretta, but she couldn't figure out how many hours this was, so we're gonna leave it at that. I won't give you that number. It must be a very big number. These individual, individuals included any combination of property owners, developers, professionals, such as attorneys, engineers, architects, planners, representing both the applicant and obviously our township professionals. The number of individuals that provided testimony is directly linked to the complexity of the proposed development and the amount of time needed to complete the hearing process for each applications. So with that in mind, I think we're gonna move into key accomplishments. Cynthia, would you wanna take?
So moving on to the key accomplishments, there are several. I'll cover the first one, which is the Rowerton Township Land Development Ordnance Revision. We are not here to take credit. We are here to just highlight our partnership and participation. So.
I guess Ed and Donna can take credit, right?
So I'm just highlighting our willingness to volunteer and be available when needed on this. So if you don't mind, I'd like to read the revisions into the record. So what we were able to accomplish with Jessica and Jeff's direction and guidance, a revision, a revised bulk standards table, a revised, updated, and modernized definition section that helps to clarify permitted use and requirements of ordinance, update site plan design standards for landscaping and tree replacement to help clarify and simplify requirements, update home occupation standards to address many work-from-home businesses. I would just like to add some context here. So as you know, times have changed a lot of home businesses. And so what we attempted, what we attempted to do is be flexible, but provide limitations and to attempt to keep the neighborhoods as they are, but also to expand where people are. I think the only situation where we were, was not viable was based on a home business being a retail, where that would consist of many deliveries during the day to deliver product to this home if it was, and then also for customer pickup. So again, most everything was viable, but that type of situation, we were, we discussed. Moving on, so update accessory apartment standards to address an aging population and to provide a variety of housing types, and I would just like to speak to that a little bit later. Update permitted and conditional uses in commercial zones to simplify, modernize, and clarify uses allowed. Again, just to have additional information. Revise conditional use standards to permit, clarify, and monitor conditionally permitted uses and administrative approval processes for home occupation, accessory apartments, outdoor dining, to provide simple applications and to be approved by the township zoning officer. If you don't mind, I'd like to read the next two paragraphs, which speak to the apartments and the additional use variance. Many of these updates will reduce the work of the Board of Adjustments through revised of design and use standards that result in applications coming before the Board of Adjustment. Some of the updates are focused on ordinances pertaining to residential properties and should provide greater flexibility to residents. For example, accessories apartments are now permitted in the use, in use of the majority of the single-family residential districts in the township. Previously, a homeowner would have been prohibited from converting a freestanding garage into an apartment. The update also, also modified the square footage to allow apartments up to 1,200 square feet. Residents desiring to construct an apartment can now do so through an administrative approval process as long as all the ordinance standards are met. Again, they would not have to come before at the Board of Adjustment. Secondly, other updates are focused on ordinances pertaining to the commercial properties and will provide additional clarity. One issue, the one issue the update addressed was the applications where a commercial business or industrial property owner sought to have more than one permitted use or structure on the property. Our previous ordinances allow, only allowed one use and one structure. The updated language now specifies that multiple permitted uses and structures are allowed, eliminating the need for applicants to seek variance. Thank you, and I'll let.
Yeah, so basically, that has streamlined the process, and it has helped us accelerate with more clarity with that initiative. There are two more significant accomplishments in 2024. And for those, I wanna thank Taylor and Jeff. They did most of the heavy liftings. The board members kind of helped comment and improve on those. So thank you for all your good effort. Those two initiatives are namely, accomplishments are namely, Board of Adjustment pamphlet, which is a very, very popular item, especially with the residential applications that had provided a lot of, thank you, Robin, that has provided a lot of clarity, and Donna. James, where's yours?
Taylor gave mine to us.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. But, so to better support, right, the Rowerton Township residents during the application process. So we've developed a six-panel, which you guys have, now available at the front desk of the Township Zoning and Planning Department. The pamphlet outlines who we are, why an applicant may need to appear before the board, required documentations, an overview of application process and required steps, the hearing procedures, and what to expect after approval. What to expect after approval, especially when you don't have very expensive lawyer like Steve, and you're a residential person. He's my buddy. It's, it's, and you're a residential person, you usually don't understand. When you get an approval, you think, it's rubber stamp, I'm done. And then they would show, say, to Jeff and Taylor and say, where is, why, why are you stopping me? So we go out of our way. Cynthia does a great job in the end of saying, now here is the pamphlet, and this is what you need to do after, to follow up. And quite frankly, I'm joking about it, but the feedback we've received from the residents about that has been extremely positive. They really appreciate it. So thank you, guys, for doing that. And the last one is the website. That also has brought a lot of information. I'm not gonna read through these bullets. You guys have the document. You can read through what it has done, but it has provided more information and more clarity in terms of how we perform. And in the end, our job, as we always mention, especially when a lot of crowded people here, to tell, our job is to see how we can protect and make better our neighbors. That's why we are there. We're there for our own neighbors. And so these two initiatives have really helped bring that clarity, and we hope, if we get any more feedback about other initiatives, which you guys can think about, please let us know, so we can see what we can do with those. Wanna go through the next?
Litigation.
Oh, litigation. I didn't wanna go through that. So basically, as you all know, I'm not gonna go into details of that, and I'm not supposed to, but both, both of us have been, so that it's not Steve, so thank you for that. But just so that it's in the notes, that it's there, okay? So with that, I'm gonna hand over to Chairwoman, and she can close this.
Okay, so just moving on to the board membership. I don't know if you are aware, at the beginning of the year, we were in not a good position. We had six board members and no alternative, or alternates, excuse me. As I mentioned, we were lucky enough to get Lorette Cortina as a full membership, but I also wanna thank James Miller and Donna Drews because I asked them very nicely to see if they would consider being our alternates. When I spoke to them, I asked, you know, look, we don't need you for the residential. We just need you for the commercial, the big ones, the complex ones. They have been so kind in showing up for 99% of them. And between them and Lorette being joining, it has improved greatly. A lot of experience, a lot of knowledge. So as much as I didn't think we needed them for the residential, they have been, they have been great to be there.
One more point about that. Also, it kind of brings the continuity. And Robin, we had spoken about this offline. They've been very helpful in bringing that bridge, and even though we keep it very strict with the BOA, but there's value there, and it shows. So thank you for that.
And finally, I just wanna go over the recommendations. Like I said, we had a few. I'm gonna read them, and then I'm gonna ask Donna or James and Russell if they wanna add to them. Okay, improve residential and business owners' knowledge of existing building permit requirements to reduce the number of applications appearing before the board after the fact. So again, just to mention, talked about it, we have residents coming back, which is not. And so we're trying, we have the pamphlet, we have the website. We will continue to try and figure out ways to help educate and help them. And if you wanna add anything, just jump in, and if not, I'll continue on.
You guys are good?
I would just say, you know, saves a lot of time for everybody and a lot of hassle. And, you know, when people have to come back, it makes us look like the bad guy. When, if we could have just gotten, made sure everything was done straight and correct the first time, then it would free up more time for other applications.
Yeah. The second item is recommended the parking lot landscape provisions be evaluated and updated to consider additional options to include landscaping within parking areas. Provide clear technical guidance on the total landscape area required in ordinance provisions. So again, we've had some applications, we, in fact, two, where their thought process from their side was, it's a parking lot, we'll just level it. And, you know, I always say, we're kind of a tree people. And we're so thankful that we have John Morgan Thomas to help us with that. Not understanding, you know, again, silly context is, I, a tree, an island is an island, right? Well, no, if they don't build it right, and they put garbage in the island, the tree doesn't grow, but they've satisfied it, the condition. So again, having his experiences is extremely helpful. Evaluate options that would address improper construction of accessory structures within lot setback area. Ordnance updates could require the stakeout and inspection of accessory structures prior to construction. You think this is, this is nothing, but I'll tell you, we had one application where it was a two-story addition to a home, and they were close to the side setback. And the construct, and we approved it, the construction company came in, and guess what? They pushed it back five feet. Now, they had a reason, and I can't remember the reason, but when they pushed it back five feet, they put it right in the setback. They had to come back, they had to stop work, they had to come back, they had to redo. Now, we obviously didn't make them knock down the building, but they had to redo the back entrance, which they were gonna have some kind of a porch or something, and they had to rework it, which is a lot to ask. And again, we're trying, as our attorney tells us, we are the most approval board that he works for. And I always look at it like, I'm here to help our neighbors do what they wanna do with limitations. And so I look, when we, when we have an application, I always go with the thought to approve it and not to just knock, knock it down. So, and John tells us we're, we've done a lot, so. and not to just knock knock it down. So and John tells us we're, we've done a lot. So that was extremely painful. So yes, stakeout and inspection, I think, would be greatly improve that situation.
And I think Cynthia, that's one where we saw residential accessory structures built in the wrong place.
Exactly, that too.
A couple of times. So, you know, because they thought they were building it at the right spot, but now by requiring corner stakeouts.
Yeah, we had a whole development that their lines are incorrect. Every single application coming in from that development, their their property lines are incorrect. So they thought they were within, you know, and they're not. By the last item, the approval of some large complex construction projects yielded site plans that require large-scale soil import and export from projects. Recommend that a new soil import export ordinance be developed that would apply at both the site and plan and subdivision. An additional ordinance that addresses soil import export into the township should be considered. First of all, these recommendations were all basically what Donna had put together for us. But this one in particular, I don't know if you know, the last application we applied hundreds, 500 trucks? Will be going through our township.
Township.
So soil removal, yeah, so it's big. And so we want to make sure that the traffic is, you know, when are they coming, when are they? So it's a lot. So I think this is.
This is up for discussion.
Discussion.
At the township, and we would just encourage that process to be accelerated because we keep seeing applications both at BOA and at Planning Board with lots of cut and fill and people moving soil around the township.
Yeah, so Rakesh Ryan, there were certain specific items of when and what. And so we made sure that he was aware of those.
You mentioned something in the report under zoning districts where you've evaluated the need for clarifications in the R3 zone, but I didn't see a recommendation.
That was actually implemented in the land development regulation ordinance that we updated.
Well, I just wanted to commend you, and please let the rest of the Board of Adjustment members know, at least on behalf of the Township Committee, that, you know, we're, when the land use ordinance was revised, we realized the hours of additional dedicated time and energy and thoughtfulness, really, to ensure a lot of the character and integrity of the area that we live within was taken into account in those recommendations and the partnership that was done to come up with that. So I know we're very grateful for it. So I would be remiss if I didn't yet again state that and let you both know that in representing the Board of Adjustment here. And I am aware that we are taking some actions, at least with some of these recommendations already. But I will, I will hold myself accountable with the Township Committee and the Planning Board with Chairman to address the parking lot. We can do that right here and make a recommendation. And then the other two would be addressed through the Township Committee.
Okay, thank you.
One last comment. We would not be, we would not be able to do all this application except for a very, very good, and most of them are here today. So I want to thank all our professionals and Taylor for being very, very supportive for us to do this many. So thank you for all the support you guys provide us.
Thank you.
Excellent. Cynthia Razul, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come today.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda are minutes and then resolutions. We do not have any minutes or resolutions to approve this evening. Next up is citizens' privilege. If anyone is here with us this evening from the community who wants to address the Board on anything other than the application that's coming up in a few minutes, now would be the time to do so. If you want to address the Board, come on up to the microphone. Okay, there being none, we're at the public hearing Diamond Nation LLC preliminary and final site plan. Construction of a 126,672 square foot self-storage warehouse. Yes, sir. Good.
Yes, so if we could just have a record that Mr. Scott McDade is going to recuse himself and that our new alternate member, Mr. Joseph Lane. You're welcome, Steve. I had him look back at the previous recording of the meeting from 2023. So in the event there is a vote tonight, he is eligible to vote. And just one more side note, if anybody needs any of the reports from anybody tonight, I have them all here on the table, and I do have extra sets of plans. And I goes for you guys too, if you need them.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, Steve, if you mind if I just say a word before we get started. Regarding this this application, just wanted to apologize. There's a little confusion regarding with our memo. I've been out of the office for a couple of weeks here for some personal reasons, but the my office actually had reviewed the other Diamond Nation Ball Field application when today they found out that we have this application on on our agenda. Then there was a little bit of panic to to do the review, not realize that we had actually done the review for this application on July 1st. So I say all that to just say you can ignore the memo that was dated to today's date, so throw that away. And we'll rely on the July 1st memo, which is a comprehensive thorough review of the what you're hearing tonight. So just wanted to give that in case, in case you guys got that tonight and were panicking on whether you should review it or not, you can ignore that memo. Just I talked to Steve and his professionals just now as well. So we'll we'll go with the July 1st memo from my office, and that'll be the memo of record. We'll retract today's memo. Again, I apologize for any confusion.
Thank you, Rakesh, for clarifying that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Stephen Grunberg, Grunberg Law Office on behalf of the applicant Diamond Nation Properties LLC. The property is located at 110, 116 River Road, block 16.03, Lot 1. I appreciate the new board member actually listening to the meeting of the prior or reading the transcript and being eligible to vote this evening. This is a continuation of our public hearing that actually happened in December 2023. And I think everybody else here is either participated in that proceeding. At that meeting, we presented three witnesses and went over a substantial portion of this proposed development. The way it left off, when I read the transcript in preparation for this evening, was that at that time, we had the overflow parking for Diamond Nation still as part of the self-proposed self-storage, and we were requesting an impervious coverage variance. And board members had questions regarding soil testing and stormwater in relationship to our impervious coverage variance. And what we have done is we have removed the proposal for the overflow parking to remain on that site. And we have committed, first, we've amended our application this evening to only be for preliminary site plan only subject to the conditions. And one of those conditions is that set forth in Mr. Vacarella's correspondence of July, I believe, where he gave us three options to proceed forward. And one of those options was that any approval by this board would be conditioned upon us establishing a commitment of where the overflow parking will be. And we agreed to do that. That would be a condition of this approval. We were set to go in July for our public hearing, and one of the issues that came up in the Board Professionals Review was a concern that Mr. Troutman hadn't had the opportunity to evaluate what that overflow parking would be. And since that time, we appreciate him doing the report and evaluating the situation. And he came up with a, I'm going to digest it for the board, an old parking requirement for the board for Diamond Nation of 525 spaces. And what's on site right now is 300 spaces plus 15, which means that our overflow parking would be a minimum of 210 spaces. And we would commit as a condition of this approval to providing the 210 spaces as a condition. So that would meet that traffic requirement or that parking requirement.
We're close, and I I wanted to wait to the appropriate time to jump in.
Okay.
And I spoke with the board professional. As you know, there is a Board of Adjustment resolution. And in that resolution, they retain jurisdiction on the parking issue. And if you total the parking spaces and the 50 bank spaces, that leads to a number of 533. So while we have a board professional report of 525, it's my legal opinion that the number has to be 533 to avoid you having to go back for relief before the Board of Adjustment. So we're close, but.
So that's fine.
I didn't think that would be an issue, but I just wanted to at least.
Yeah, no, I appreciate.
Put that on the record.
We'll agree to the extra eight spaces as an overflow.
Steve, Steve, before, yeah, Steve, before you go any further, unfortunately, Michelle Kavakiri will have to accuse herself as well.
Okay.
So she's not eligible to vote for tonight.
You, I'll defer to Mr. Toriello, but just because you weren't at the other meeting doesn't mean that you can't participate this evening. Just means that if we go to a vote, you wouldn't be able to vote.
Right.
You can, you can certainly, you could certainly participate and not.
I didn't want you to have to recuse yourself if you could actually participate. So we're willing to provide the additional eight spaces. So I I think that actually takes care of the record keeping in terms of where we are and how we got here for this evening. We did present significant testimony at the last meeting about the architecture and the site and how it's going to work. None of that's going to change because the only thing that we've removed is the overflow parking. So for this evening, what I propose to present is to have Mr. McKenna come back up and go over the site changes and how that happened. And then we'll present Mr. John Tykina with his planning testimony. If there's any other questions that board members have with respect to it that I need to call anybody else, I'll bring them up. But right now, I'm only proposing to call those two witnesses.
And just for just, I just want to keep this transcript clean. So you indicated in summing things up from the December 23 hearing, there were three witnesses that testified. Those three witnesses were Kyle McKenna, Kevin Bolter, and Perry Petrillo. Okay, so Mr. McKenna, who will be testifying tonight, I don't have to swear in again because he's still under oath. But Mr. Tykina, I do have to swear in?
Yes, John Tykina would need to be sworn in.
Okay. So if you want, if you think that's all you're going to need, I would just ask that whoever the applicant thinks is going to testify. If you want to come up, I'd like to swear everybody in once, just for efficiency, including the board professionals.
Let's just call Mr. Tykina up, and then if I have to, I'll bring.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay, so if everybody could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're going to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, starting with applicant's witness, if you could please state your name and spell it for the record.
John Tykina, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N A. Thank you.
Rakesh Darji with Environment Resolutions, Board Engineer.
Jeff Vacarella, I'm the Township Planner.
Steve, Steve, can we get something in writing about the preliminary? Because the latest that we have is preliminary final.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're only asking for preliminary. So I'd ask Mr. McKenna to come forward. Mr. McKenna was previously under oath, and he was previously accepted as an expert by the Board, or your license is still in good standing?
They are.
And you were charged with amending the plans to remove overflow parking and dealing with other concerns raised by the Board at the last meeting. Why don't you take the Board through our changes to the plan?
Sure, so I'm going to introduce my next exhibit. I believe it's A6. It's going to be a colorized rendered version of the latest site plan that was submitted with the application.
And this was provided to Taylor before the meeting.
This is, it's a colored version of Site Plan Sheet C301. It's dated September 24, 2025. And if you have, if you're familiar or you have Sheet C301 in front of you, this is the same plan. We just colorized it, put an arrow in the background to help make it a little more visually helpful. So as Mr. Grunberg stated, the primary change with this plan relative to the prior is the removal of the overflow parking area, which was 183 spaces. So looking at the site, you can see the northern, the northern half of the site is is now mostly open space with a proposed bioretention basin there. The southern half of the site is still the previously proposed self-storage facility, approximately 127,000 square feet. We have also, in addition to removing the overflow parking area, we've also shifted the proposed self-storage facility approximately 30 feet to the north to center it a little bit more in the site and actually conform with the setback requirements along River Road. Other than that, it's very similar to the previous, the previously presented plan. I'll provide a brief, just kind of overview of operations, just as a refresher. Vehicular access is provided to the south of the site along the old, the old River Road alignment. Vehicles would access at the point, it's it's the exact same location as you'd access the overflow parking lot today. Vehicles would traverse north, accessing the lot, and again, in a similar location to the current current overflow parking area, and then you would be able to circulate self-storage, the self-storage facility via the outer drive aisle to the front of the site where the main lobby and office area is. Otherwise, operationally, no, no significant changes. So we have on the north and south side of the building, you have your roll-up doors for direct access to the storage facilities. Your main access point is going to be along the the western side of the building, where there's the two interior loading areas, also the office area and access to the to the interior of the facility at the rear. Again, no change. There's a door to access the facility along with four parallel style parking areas. They're a little bit oversized parking areas to help facilitate unload and load for customers. With respect to variances, there, there was a removal of a lot of impervious area here. So we now conform with the impervious coverage requirement. So that variance has been eliminated. We do still have variance for proposed parking for the self-storage facility, proposing 16 spaces, whereas 60 64 are required per the ordinance. We previously testified to this the appropriate nature of the spaces. Given the ITE actually recommends 0.1 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, that would fall in the range of approximately 13 spaces. We're proposing 16. We're also proposing the required make-ready electrical vehicle space as well, very similar to the previous application. Sinage for the proposed building remains the same. We're proposing one sign on each of the frontages on the northwest and south sides of the building. We are requesting a variance for signage for proposing the three signs, whereas only one is required. We do have a planner that's going to provide some further testimony on the justification for the sign variances. However, given the unique condition of this, this site, as it was previously testified to, we have basically four front, front yards. We're on a corner, and there's some typographic change between River Road and then the north-south direction, and then River Road or 523 heading towards the, towards the east.
Do you have an exhibit that would show what that would look like?
We, we have the.
Quite a variant, no pun intended, quite a variance from this signage.
We do have the exhibits that were presented previously, the architectural elevations, so we could, we could bring those up. They're over.
You know, I, I might be convinced that the three signs is appropriate, but is it, was there any effort made to conform closer to, given that you don't even know who's going to operate the facility, at least I'm assuming that's still the case. If they were each one hundred square feet versus a hundred and eighty-three or ninety-three? You know, was there any, any discussion or thought to reduce the size so that the variance that you're requesting is more in conformance, at least with the sign of on the building?
We're still proposing the same, same size signage as one hundred ninety-four square foot size. I know we did provide testimony previously and presented, presented the exhibits for the elevations to show scale of that size relative to the, the wall of the building. You know, we, we, again, given the size of the building, we felt that was an appropriate sign to help guide customers to the, to the facility. So that, that's we're still proposing this evening.
I'd like to see that again, because just in reviewing the notes and looking at where, what relief you're asking, that kind of popped out to me. So if, if that graphic with the signs.
Yeah, we'll, we'll present that through a different, different testimony.
So again, yeah. Similarly with landscaping, so we have some more landscaping now, open space. Landscaping plan is quite similar. We did change and I'll touch into the stormwater, because I know that was a point of discussion last, at the last hearing. But we do also have two bio retention basins, one on the south side of the site, one on the north side of the site, along with the perimeter landscaping for the parking area and the proposed tree trees. And, you know, I'll be happy to go through the landscape architecture review letter as well. With respect to lighting, again, really no change with that respect, except there's removal of the lighting for the surface parking overflow lot that was removed. We are still requesting, we're fully conforming with respect to lighting standards with the exception of the lighting level near the driveway access, near the southeast corner of the property, we are exceeding the half-foot candle requirement, we're proposing a two-point-seven-foot candles at that point. Again, that's sort of the, the interconnection between the perimeter access road and onsite access road. So we do think that's an appropriate light level, but it's, it is, it is a waiver technically.
Could you point that out where exactly, and that's the only place? Because when you look at the plans, it seems like there's lots of places where the numbers are really high.
Within the, within the interior of the lot, there are, they are higher than the point five, but at the, at the property line, I believe that's the only location where we really have an exceedance is in this general vicinity near the southeast corner of the property. There's another area that you were concerned about, I can, I can touch on that, but the.
Just to clarify too, I'm sorry. Much time to look at these between the last testimony. At this point, there's no plans for a light at the driveway entrance off of River Road?
Off, off of our site within the county right-of-way?
Right.
There, there's not, so our proposed lighting is limited to the site. Site lighting, onsite lighting only.
Okay, well, then I'll follow up with a question. The existing county right-of-way in their review letter mentioned that the applicant should request a vacation of the right-of-way and then it could be added to the applicant's property. So what is your proposal for fixing that road? Because it's in pretty rough shape. And there's also some, when I sat there today trying to get out of the driveway after twenty-three cars, there's also a lot of shrubs and trees right at the end of the driveway, which if I was stopped at the stop bar, you couldn't see north. That it's basically, they obviously overgrown from what was, was planted by, I assume, the county.
Sure, so our improvements are to widen the portion of, highlighted on the exhibit A six. So the portion of the, I'll refer it as Old River Road, because it's, you know, it's technically not vacated, but it's no longer in use. So the portion from our proposed access drive down to River Road, you can see there's a, there's like a gray hatch showing that we are proposing an expansion and repaving of, or that portion of the roadway to bring it up to standards and improve, improve that section of the road. We did submit this application to the county planning department. We did receive a conditional review, conditional approval from the county. Comments were fairly, or the conditions were pretty benign, it was primarily operation and maintenance agreement for stormwater, things like that. But they didn't have any notable, what I would consider notable, significant technical comments, and they were, they were comfortable with the.
But that letter did talk about a process to get that road vacated so that you, the applicant could have, have them build a road.
Do you have a copy of that letter maybe?
Yeah, we have it.
There we go. Was submitted, my apologies.
Yeah, I have.
Is it the June twelve, twenty twenty-three letter?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we did submit a copy.
Yeah, we have it.
It's just that if, I guess my concern is if the applicant's going to eventually have this roadway vacated and merged with their property, then we probably want this built to county standards for the road.
Do you know, do you know which comment specifically and then which number? I don't, I don't, I know there's a, you may be referring to comment number two, in which they, they do indicate that it's, it's kind of an either-or option that would need to be discussed. So I think the preference of the applicant at this time would be to, to just seek a maintenance agreement rather than a vacation.
The, the problem with the vacation is that we don't own the adjacent property along that road all the way to that intersection. So by entering into a use and occupancy, a use agreement and maintenance agreement, it would allow us to use the property, but we would never own that if there were a vacation took place. Because that's county property adjacent to it.
Yeah, the, I'm kind of, I'm agreeing with Steve on that. When you look at the, what, what's on the screen right now, that the southern, that southern tip where there's a drainage basin, that's county property, right? So if they were to vacate the right-of-way, the only portion that the applicant would actually have on their property would be the, the portion along their frontage. So that small portion of driveway would, you know, would be on, on their property at that point.
So then if.
They would still require a use and operation.
So are we approving a project that's not on public road?
No, it is on a public road, it's, it's access comes off of a public road.
But it's a vacated right-of-way.
Right, it's a vacated right-of-way, but then, but they also have the other public, the, the new River Road is a public road, so they do have frontage along that road and they have frontage along.
The access.
But they're not accessing, so they, so we're not approving something that's not on a public road. They're getting access from a public road, which is the old, the old right-of-way, which is not vacated, right? It's, it's still current right-of-way.
Yeah, it's not vacated and it's also currently serving as the access point for the overflow parking lot as well.
And there's no requirement of a planning variance because the property does front not only on one.
Right, that, that was my original point.
Yeah, yeah, I, I concede on that.
But I guess my, my point is that the, if the applicant were to seek vacation of the old right-of-way, they would be entitled to half the width along their frontage of the old, old River Road. They would still require an agreement to go through, go off of.
The stem.
That, that stem, so in a, in a sense, I, it wouldn't be uncomplicating things, it wouldn't complicate things anymore, it would be a little bit more costly for the applicant to write the deeds and everything. But you would still have a county property that they would have to be accessing off of, whether it's the right-of-way or the county property. Follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I guess I'm just struggling with how do we get a road, an access road built that needs our standard? Like right now, the road that's there is hot-holed and a mess.
So the applicant can, and they are widening the roadway and the, the existing roadway should be evaluated and any improvements made, so if the existing roadway needs to be repaved rather than just added on to, I imagine the applicant wouldn't have an objection to that.
No, I, I think that's part of the use agreement is, and the maintenance agreement is to be able to do exactly that.
Yeah.
Because this is. What the mechanism is.
I mean.
It's a vacation or a use agreement to the satisfaction of the county, it's really a county issue.
It, it, it is, but I understand what, what Mr. Drew's saying. Since this is a preliminary on the application, it, it does give us an opportunity to maybe have the applicant in, in our office at work to address your concern between now and final, that sound like a reasonable idea?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I, I heard a yes, so then the condition of approval would be the applicant to work with the engineer to address maintenance and/or repair.
Really, I think Mr. Drew's concerned, and it's, it's, again, it's my concern as well, that the, the access driveway meet current standards, which I think the applicant would want to do as well. So we'll, we'll make sure that gets done between now and final. And as far as the vacation, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that further, but I don't know that the vacation really is going to decide anything. I think it's really the condition of the roadway that's concerned.
Based on what was said, I agree.
And Joe, can we also include in there that they would trim that vegetation on both corners right there? I saw the same thing. And it's just a matter of maintaining bad, overgrown vegetation that would clear out that sightline.
We can do that. So have we gone through the variances and design waivers?
Yes, yes, not, not quite yet. So we touched on the, the lighting waiver, which led us to that discussion. And again, just to clarify, so the, the exceedance of the point five at right-of-way or property line is generally limited to the southeast corner. You'll see, you referred to sheet C zero seven, that it kind of bumps, bumps out just near that entrance area.
Is that the only design waiver we require for lighting?
For lighting, correct, yes.
I'm sorry, it's kind of difficult to hear with these microphones. So you're saying the only place where you exceed the, the lighting requirements of the township is in that southeast corner?
Correct, adjacent to the access point.
You said there were some other places. There was, no. I think Ms. Drew's commented that the light levels were higher in other areas on site, but the, my understanding is the ordinance requirement is point five at the property line, and that's the only place where we exceed, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, and just to close out, on the summary of the variances, we do also still have the setback variance. Like I said, the building was shifted approximately thirty feet to the north to mitigate the, the setback variance along the current River Road, but we do still have the setback variance in what I would generally look at as, as the rear, but it's, it's along that old River Road on the east side of the site.
And, and what is that variance?
It's a hundred feet, whereas fifty feet are proposed.
And that's to the, the access to the rear, correct?
That's, that's the setback from the, for the rear building, for the, for the building. It's all front, they're all front yard setbacks.
Right. And we'll present the planning testimony on the reason why we already submitted about that site actually having multiple front yards, correct?
Correct. The other thing I really had that I wanted to touch on in my direct was the stormwater, I know that was a point of discussion at the original meeting, so since, since the meeting in two thousand twenty-three, we have performed supplemental stormwater testing and investigation within the wet season as required by the DEP, I know that was a, a comment that was brought up at the prior hearing. We have reduced significantly the impervious and motor vehicle area proposed onsite with the elimination of the overflow parking area. So there's been a bit of a change in strategy on the stormwater management for the site, but we do conform with all DEP standards with respect to water quality and quantity reductions in the green GIs. We addressed stormwater quality and quantity via two bio retention basins with under drains. One is located on the north side of the building and one is located to the south of the building. In that, those, those two BMPs address the requirements for water quality.
Couple other design waivers that I had that might need to be addressed, maybe they are no longer applicable. The off-street loading in the minimum required front yard, is that been eliminated?
The, the off-street loading within the minimum required front yard has been eliminated because the building is now located along, or the two loading spaces in the front of the building on the west side are now within the required hundred-foot setback area. So I, I would interpret that as being eliminated.
Okay, counsel, if I, if I can. I don't think, I don't think the board would mind me speaking on their behalf. We have a preferred way of, of hearing applications, it, it ensures that we don't get lost while things are jumping around. If we can follow with as much fidelity as possible, the planners' report and the engineers' report in the exact order that is presented so that we ensure that we're not missing anything. So for example, the record was sprayed with C variance relief and there's like four that are missed that, that the planner had called out on, right on page two of his report. So if we can do it that way, I know for myself, I can't keep notes of this and there's no way I'm going to be able to prepare an accurate resolution if we don't follow the planners' report and then the engineers', please.
That's fine, we'll, we'll go right to Mr. Vacarello's.
Thank you.
Dated July third, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, we actually have two planners' reports.
I'll, I'll start with Mr. Vacarello's, if that's okay. The, he identifies the variances and if you want to go through them, which ones still apply and which ones don't, if any.
Certainly, so this is section variance relief. Item number one, just outlines at the following variances. Item number two is the set building, the front yard setback requirement for building, which is proposed at fifty feet. As I noted, that, that fifty-foot encroachment is at the east side of the building along the old River Road, so we're proposing a fifty-foot setback, whereas one hundred feet is required. As I noted, the interpretation is that all the entire, all frontages are front yards on this particular site, which is a unique condition, given the irregular shape of, of, and shape and condition of having right-of-way all around it on this particular lot. The next is.
You're speaking about, excuse me, for the variance is that, that northern side, I guess, going against River, the old River Road. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
It's actually the east, it's actually east side, but correct, yeah, east with along Old River Road with the, the railroad beyond, correct.
And he also calls out a two-foot retaining wall as requiring the same variance.
Correct, so in that, in that area along Old River Road, there is a, a small two-foot retaining wall as well.
Do you know the setback on that?
I can concur, confirm for you.
Can we please just make sure we speak into the microphone directly, please?
It's the, the setback of the retaining wall is five feet. What's the purpose of the retaining wall? It's, it's really just to provide a grading differential between the existing county road, there's some utilities along the existing county road in that area. So we're proposing, again, it's, it's approximately two feet, just to facilitate a great change between the drive aisle on the perimeter of the site and some existing utility infrastructure within the old River Road right-of-way.
And technically, a two-foot retaining wall is a structure that requires a variance?
Correct. Correct. The the next, item number three is variance for lot area, whereas the minimum required lot area in this zone is five acres. The lot existing and proposed is four point eight nine acres, which requires a variance.
That's an existing condition that we're not changing, correct?
Correct, that's an existing condition. Number five is the the signage, which we had previously identified. So we are proposing a total of five hundred and eighty-two square feet of signage, whereas one hundred square feet is permitted. The next, number six, is for the number of signs, which is proposed at three wall signs, whereas one is permitted.
That five eighty-two still applies? That five that five eighty-two still applies?
Correct, those are still current.
Thank you.
The there's item number seven on the letter is for a variance for the height of the sign because there are portions of the sign at an elevation higher than the second floor. And the note, item number eight on that letter is for the number of parking stalls, which I did previously identify as we're proposing sixteen parking stalls, where a sixty-four are required. I provided some brief testimony on supporting that variance. And item number nine is for the the size of the loading spaces. So this was this is unchanged from the prior testimony provided initially. We are proposing a twelve-by-forty-foot loading space interior to the building along the the western side of the building or would 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 function and serve practically as the front of the building, whereas the twelve-by-fifty feet is required. Again, I think this is appropriate, given the nature of the self-storage use. You're not really going to have your traditional commercial retail loading operations. This is going to be, you know, small U-holes and and passenger vehicles and things of that nature. That concludes the variance release section of the planning report.
In this report, I believe Jessica's also listed some variances.
If you want us to move to her report.
I'm just saying, if you're representing this as the complete list of variances. Okay, well, well, you can deal with those when you get to hers report, if you'd like to finish with Jeff's report.
And then as you go through Jeff's report, you could see where he's indicated that items are satisfied and where he's pulled out in bold where either all we need to hear is that you agree to that condition, or if he's asking for testimony, then that could be provided, but that can streamline it.
I could probably help streamline that.
Thank you.
I I think we can move down to
sixteen.
Sixteen, which we already agreed as a condition of approval, that a truck rental business would not be on site. Because that would require a different, so that's fine. Going down to number nineteen, I think we indicated that we're going to provide additional testimony on the wall signage from another witness. Going to number twenty, ground signage or directional signage. Will there be permanent or temporary signage pertaining to diamond nation installed? And the answer to that is no, correct?
You said no?
Correct, correct.
Or or this facility?
Well, you asked for permanent or temporary signage pertaining to diamond nation be installed, so.
That was comment, but I'm I'm asking just in addition to that.
Any ground signage or directional signage proposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can skip down to number twenty-three, county planning board approval, which I think we already testified to. We have conditional approval. Twenty-four. We agreed to provide the AutoCAD Geo-Referenceed AutoCAD. Twenty-five, we will address the county agency reviews when we get to them at the end of this report. Twenty-six, historian commission review mentions an archaeological grid on the site. Would you provide testimony with respect to that?
Sure. So this, I believe this comes from a reference in our in in the environmental report that was submitted with the application. So there's in the maps, we did identify that this area falls within historical area and a specific grid for archaeological study, but as far as I'm aware, there's no requirement to that. It's really just an indication that it's it's on the map. There are some historic properties in the general area nearby, but there's, you know, the majority of the developed sites and areas are are all within the same grid and district. So I'm not, I don't think there's any implication on that restriction.
There's no historic structure on this site?
None that none that was identified or that we're aware of.
And there's no requirement to prevent us from doing any type of development on this site, correct?
No.
Number twenty-seven, we'll give everything in PDF format, which we did. Twenty-eight, and we have our stographer here. Going into the new comments.
Can I just interrupt you for a second? I'm going to bring you back to bullet number twenty-three on the county planning board. It's really not our place to interpret the language here. Maybe you can offer an interpretation. On their letter of June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the Hunter County Planning Board says that on June first, two thousand twenty-three, and was granted conditional approval not to construct. Can you clarify in your words what that means?
It it means that they gave us approval, but we're not allowed to construct until we meet all of their conditions. And we're only seeking here preliminary approval.
So it's medium.
So we can't even construct with whatever relief we get from you people until we get final approval. So that satisfaction of the outside governmental agency approval of the county would be a condition of this approval as well.
It's a little inartfully written.
But it is.
Yeah, I don't I don't like the way they do that, but.
Not my choice either.
Moving on to number thirty, we'll get to the other planners' review. I but I think we're we already talked about the parking. Thirty-one. Piles of concrete, rock, and soil on the property are on county road right of way. Please see attached, the applicant shall address. I can tell you that if it hasn't been removed in total, it will be. It it as of two days ago, it was almost all removed.
It's gone.
Okay. And Ms. Drew's confirms that it's gone. So that's a good thing. But if it, to the extent that it isn't, it will be. Proposed lawn area to the northwestern portion of the site, applicant shall testify to the area, this area of the site.
Yes, so this is the area where the current overflow parking area is, and we're proposing it to be a a seeded lawn area, with the exception of the the portion that is functioning as a bioretention basin. So we're not proposing any parking on that area, correct?
So the fences get closed up and the crosswalks get painted over?
We're not proposing to change the.
I mean, we all know it, right? As hard as you try, and I know you do try. People get creative when they're there in the car and they want to drop off Bobby, and they pull in pretty much anywhere.
It's going to be a curbed area. There's landscaping on the perimeters. You'd have to drive over a curb and and some shrubs to get over there. So I I think that's it's kind of self-regulating. And again, we're going to be proposing an alternative solution that's hopefully more convenient as a condition of this approval.
But you wouldn't have any objection to closing that fence off so people can't go out?
I I can't agree to remove the striping within the county, you know, in intersection to signal. But extending the fence.
Closing the fence within the interior.
Within this site, yeah. Because there's a gap where people walk out.
Where you want them to walk.
Yeah, under plan, the chain link fence. Okay, okay, everybody on microphone, if you want it on transcript, please. On the plans, the chain link fence ends at the crosswalk.
Right.
So there's an opening.
So the request would be to extend that up and around the corner.
Close it off, so people aren't tempted to park in the self-storage place and walk to that corner to get to the the diamondation facility after this is built. So it just closed the fence off.
Yeah, the.
The existing fence isn't drawn in on their plans.
Yeah, there's it's it's drawn in. There I I think.
Looks like about a fifty-foot gap up up at the corner, Kyle.
So did they propose to remove the fence along the top of the property? Because it's, did they propose to remove the fence along the top of the property?
No, we're not proposing to remove it, but there it does.
Not on the plans, that's my point.
So the existing chain link will remain?
The existing chain link fence is 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 already proposed to remain there. It's on the it's on the plan. It is. I think the request is that it it terminates at about the crosswalk. Beyond the crosswalk, there's actually a slope up. So I don't know how far we could actually continue it, but I think that's being discussed right there.
It's it's. Yeah, to use Ed's pejorative, to keep Johnny's dad from parking at the self-storage place and walking.
Yeah, so I mean, it's almost eight thirty. Usually we take a break at eight thirty. Do we want to? I don't think they know what they're even doing.
Okay.
If you'd like to take a break. We're going to take a five-minute break. Yeah.
Yeah.
We want, yeah.
We're going to go to a five-minute break, okay?
Now, guys, we're back in session.
Microphone.
So I think the question was whether we would agree to extend the proposed fence along the where that crosswalk area is, and we we'd be willing to do that. We can't, the county controls the crosswalk itself.
No, we get.
But we'll extend the fence a little bit past that crosswalk.
Limits to temptation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Like that, like how you did that.
My first time getting in trouble. She was so polite, though, wasn't she?
That was the Robert Tenero, are you talking to me?
That was that was very ni- very nicely done. Well, I I I heard Mr. Gruber say we'll extend it a little, and I heard conversations up here on the dais that to me, I heard more than a little, so I want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
So how about we say to the satisfaction of our traffic engineer and engineer to assure pedestrian safety, but it needs to go.
You guys don't want people parking there and crossing the road?
Correct.
That's fine. We we'll work that out.
We'll go past the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Yeah. Around the corner.
Back back to me. We're on to thirty-three.
Thirty-four.
Which is the E V stalls. We we were providing one make-ready stall. I think Mr. Vacarello is saying we need to provide two according to the ordinance.
I think that was with the sixty-four spaces.
Yeah, because, yeah.
The sixteen spaces.
I I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. It's with, because it was two required with the sixty-four spaces, but we're not doing the sixty-four space requirement. You're doing this, you're proposing sixteen.
But you're required, you're required twenty, you're required sixty-four.
So what you're saying is although there's, is it your opinion then, Jeff, that what you're saying is although there's relief for the parking spaces, it's not with the E V?
No, it would be for the E V.
It would be, so it would be one.
Required one.
Okay.
So we're we're, we think that we're we're going to provide one. Okay, and you really don't need to for a self-storage facility. We already dealt with the Hunter County conditional approval and revised agency reviews were attached, which we'll go through now. I think the first one is the fire. R T M U A is in my packet as the first one. And we we have the will serve for the R T M U A and will will apply for the one E D U.
So do you have, is this the latest correspondence from R T M U A?
Yes.
So it says that the owner of the property will need to apply to the R T M U A for sewer service capacity?
That's the one that you provided.
Okay.
So you.
We will do that.
So they it require, so do you have it or? You need to apply.
We need to apply.
Okay, so that.
But we have, we we do have a will serve letter from your R T M U A.
So I think that needs to be done prior to final, right, Joe?
Correct.
That'll be that'll be needed before final.
The R T M U A will serve.
A will serve?
Yes.
That's fine. The next one is the environmental dated March twentieth. It it seems like the environmental report dealt with the overflow parking as if that plans hadn't been revised. So I'm not quite sure how to address this.
I don't think so.
Because it talks about forty percent coverage. Not before your application was, I believe, sixty-something percent coverage. In the impervious coverage was much higher.
Well, I think note number two was sort of doing their calculation of impervious, and they're arriving at forty-two-five versus forty, and that I don't know. At work, we we, yeah, so I I don't know that that.
Yeah, I'm. If there's anything you want to address in here, but I I thought that this was all dealt with as you know, it seems like it's dealing with the overflow parking as the primary issue, and we've removed that.
Their minimum lap size requirement that they're calling out, is that still?
Yeah, that's one of the, that's one of the, that's the relief they're seeking.
I I would also respectfully say that I I think the environmental commission is overstepping their role here in terms of evaluating the application, not from an environmental standpoint, but in terms of the number of signs. I think that's in the purview of the planning board. The relief in the magnitude of the variances in the is in the planning board's venue. We would agree. Okay, thanks.
So that's, I do want to note, but that's only number eight, nine on the report.
Right. I do want to note that some of the stuff you think they're overstepping on is also things that eventually lead to things like impervious coverage. The parking leads to impervious coverage. So yes, they comment on all these things that they see as being an issue. And I understand that maybe they might be a little off because they're not experts. And our experts will correct that.
I I and I'm just pointing out that I think a number of these items are the jurisdiction of this board and not the environmental commission, not disparaging their enthusiasm, I'm just saying, this is the jurisdiction of the planning board and not the environmental commission.
Yeah, it's really, it's in it, but it's not to actually, when these are reviewed, I'm there, and these aren't they're to bring attention to certain things. They're not expected to be an official report with testimony or expertise.
Unless there's anything else, I'll move on to the fire. On on the fire, we agree. On, on the fire, we agreed to do everything, correct?
Correct. You'll agree to all the conditions.
Correct, okay. We'll make all those changes.
Correct.
Correct. Recycling coordinator is the next one. It will cooperate. And we provided testimony previously as to how the interior of this space will have, for the limited amount that happens, will have recycling and trash receptacles, and they'll be taken care of as needed.
And you'll provide the report to KLA every February 15th as required by state law.
Sure. We already addressed the archaeological. That would be it for Mr. Vacarello's report unless he has anything else.
No additional questions, thank you.
Then I'd like to go to.
I should go to the second planner's report.
Second planner's report, which is over here. It's Caldwell's report. And I think I can skip to her page under proposed project, which I don't see a number. Project number eight. And the variances that start there, are there any that we missed? Design waivers that we missed?
So we did call out the skipping through, a lot of the variances Jeff and I called out were the same. I think one thing was the loading spaces in the front yard. Based on the ordinance, the definition of front yard is in front of the building, even though I know you're outside of the setback is still considered to be in the front yard if it's in front of the building, between the building and the the front yard line.
Okay, so if, since we have three front yards, we would request that variance because we don't have anything but front yards.
Right. I think there's just, your engineer was mentioning, maybe it wasn't a variance. And then I'm not sure that you mentioned that five loading spaces were required and two are being provided. And then we just had a question about the.
What number one is that, Jessica?
I'm sorry. That's under number 15. Looks like my page numbers disappeared somehow. Apologize for that. It's just online.
Wait, yeah, what about 13? Is that a design waiver?
Under the signs we had, no. I'm sorry, what number were you saying?
To back up, number 13. I, you call out a, is that a design waiver? A design waiver for the parking, the sidewalk with?
Right, a five-foot sidewalk is proposed between the self-storage building and the four parallel spaces on the eastern side.
Yeah, I just see this complies on.
It does comply. It's just, it's all the underlying comments are new comments because it's a second report. So it's a four-foot clear areas required, so they have five foot.
So that's, that's.
Oh, it's complying.
Right, that's correct.
I apologize, yep.
Yeah, that's all right.
I like the words, this complies.
So the underlines were for the new comments and the changed comments. So we did make a comment about the EV spaces and that if you build 16, you have one EV space requirement. If for some reason you had to build 64, you would have two. That was under 14, under 15, we had the loading spaces where you're proposing two, but five are required. We noted that they were in the front yard in between the building and the front right-of-way line, which obviously you have four front yards.
Yeah, I think we already provided the testimony that the spaces are essentially loading spaces for smaller trucks and cars, and that's why we don't.
The four, the four parallel ones.
Correct.
So I think those, the, the question about that was just that they would also fall under that loading spaces in the front yard versus parking, because they meet the parking setback for parking spaces, but they're in the front yard of the building, but obviously all sides of the building are in the front yard, but that's, that would just put another variance on that.
And the nature of the app, of the use is a self-storage facility where you're going to need some parking available to have some loading and unloading.
Just as a point of clarification, those on our plans, those four spaces are actually counted as parking spaces, so just to, they're included in the 16. If you, if you want to categorize them as loading, I just want to clarify that that would change the parking space requirement. We propose them as parking spaces are just a little oversized, considering the nature of these, thought they'd be convenient.
Yeah, that was a question, are they oversized parking spaces or undersized loading spaces?
Yes, we're calling them oversized parking.
Okay, so then we'll keep it at the two loading spaces proposed where five are required, and then those would be, those would meet the parking space setback and you would stay at 16 parking spaces, okay.
So before we proceed, I just, I want to make sure my notes are correct. So all the way from item one to 15 in Ms. Caldwell's report, the only thing I have to include is that there's variance relief requested for proposing two loading perks where five are required, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then.
Otherwise, everything else is the same as what's in Mr. Vacarello's report that has already been addressed up to this point.
If he raised the loading spaces in the front yard, I didn't hear that one, but.
That might be another one. I thought it was, but loading spaces in the front yard.
That's Jessica's.
Which is where in the report?
It's under 15.
15B1.
15B1?
Yes.
For 15BI.
BI, yeah.
That's, that's also a condition, or I'm sorry, a variance.
Yes. I believe you covered everything else.
Okay, I thought so.
Jeff's report, yes.
Technically, that's a design waiver.
The parking spaces in the front.
Yeah, it's under 296-75C, which is under site design.
Okay. So BI and, I guess, double I and three I, those are all design waivers?
Yes.
Next would be Mr. Darji's report of July 1st.
Wait, I don't recall Mr. Vacarello talking about fence heights, and I'm seeing 18 fences. Is there any relief needed for that?
They're all under eight feet.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we're okay.
She also mentions signage. Going into that or waiting until?
We, we, we're going to present additional testimony with respect to the signage.
Yep.
But with, it's the same variances that Mr. Vacarello called out.
That's, that's correct.
Can I go on to Mr. Darji's report?
Yes, please.
I think we're going down to the design waiver for the parking lots and access drives, is that on page two, waivers number two?
That's correct. Number two on, at the bottom of page two. Waivers. July 1st, yes, July 1st is the memo. And it's page two of six at the bottom.
We don't have an item.
This is page three.
Oh, yeah. We're missing page.
Trust me, there's a page two. I have it.
Jeff, Jeff's got it.
That's the only substantive thing on page two.
Wow.
Well.
So you agree with, you agree with the three design waivers that are called out, enumerated as two, three, and four? I'm asking the applicant if he agrees with the design waivers that are called out in our engineer's report, items two, three, and four.
At two and three, four is, there's no design waiver.
I'm sorry, right.
And we already talked about three. The only additional one would be two.
Right.
Someone say what it is.
It's certainly, actually, do you want me to do it?
Sure.
It's a waiver, or waiver from section 29675C2J, where parking lots and access drives are to be set back 20 feet from the street right-of-way lines and at least 15 feet from all of, all other property lines. The drive aisle is set back eight and a half feet from the old River Road right-of-way. So that's, that's what that waiver is.
Then going on to general comments, I think we've already provided this testimony in the past.
Yeah, and I'll certainly defer to, to the other board professionals who are present. I, I would actually, this dates back to before me being your engineer, so if this testimony was provided, I certainly don't need to hear it again, if you don't need to hear it again.
And on the site layout plan, we will do all of those things. I think everything else we will do, correct?
For, for site layout plan, yes, we would agree.
What about stormwater management? Uh, grading drainage and utilities?
I would agree to to 16 and 17, yeah, but we would agree. I'm not sure if there's further testimony requested on those, but we would agree to address those as needed.
What's at 16, 17?
Yes.
You can read what they are.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't see those, those conditions. I see those as you needing to satiate our engineers' concerns. And for committee women, for two's benefit, yeah, I agree. The gradient, the comments are 16 and 17 in the grading drainage utility section of our memo. One is, I think, just a typographical error. That elevation, I think, is just wrong. It says 135.95. It probably needs, that creates a low spot. If it was 136.136.95, it would work perfectly. So I think it's just a typographical error, which will be fixed, I imagine. And then the other is a little bit more substantive. There's a head wall that comes off of the highway in the northeast corner of the site, which is then drained around the site to a stormwater inlet to get piped down the, the system to go where it was normally going, towards the big drain, the drainage basin that exists on the corner. What we were asking was that for that to be piped directly. I don't imagine there's any, any issue with that, right, Kyle?
No.
Okay.
And that, and that is, we did consider and describe an account for that in the stormwater management report as well.
Yeah, it's understood. The calculations are fine. It's really just from a stability standpoint, I think it would make more sense to pipe it.
Stormwater management, is there anything in there that we need to address, or, or can we do that as to the engineer's satisfaction?
I'm sorry, before we move on, is there a condition for 17? Is there something that you want them to do to address that? 17, I think they agree that they're going to do it. Agreed to do what? It's to pipe the stormwater that comes off the highway through the head wall, rather than letting it go overland through their site. They'll pipe it to the inlet where it's.
Okay, thank you. Anything on stormwater that we can't address?
We talked about 19. We'll provide the report.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to dig in on any of these, but yeah, we would agree to address the, the comments under stormwater management.
Okay.
Unless there's anything you need us to talk about, we'll, we'll address all your comments. No, I think, they said the magic words, so unless the board has any comments about any of the, or questions about any of the comments in my memo, I'm happy to discuss them. The applicant, like I said, said the magic words are going to make the changes.
So there, just to clarify, so there's nothing in the additional permeability and the bio-retention things that are referenced in that part of the memo that are going to impact their ability to meet the standard?
No, I believe that the design meets, meets the standards. We asked for some additional, you know, details and things like that, which that will provide.
I'll move on, unless you stop me, to landscape and lighting. And we've asked for testimony regarding the highly moisture-sensitive soils found in the GeoTech report, and if there's any impact on proposed landscaping.
No, the, the comments on the moisture-sensitive soils in the GeoTech report are more so tailored towards treatment during construction and the structural stability of the soil. So from a landscape perspective, there's, there's no concern with, with that. It's really more of a construction matter and for structural stability of the soil for the, for the foundations.
I'll move on to 24. That's county planning board again, correct, because it's under their jurisdiction?
Correct.
Actually, he's asking if you'll re-straight to the satisfaction of him.
Correct, and we can't do that because it's under the county's jurisdiction.
So what, what's kind of talking about?
Number 24 under landscape and lighting, the restriping of the pavement.
We previously testified that the corner, Bartle's corner and River Road, or it's a county intersection.
It is a county intersection. I think if we could look at that, I mean, the county will permit it if, if we discuss and they agree. So I'd like to at least get, leave that option open if, if the applicant, our office and the county agree that there's some revisions that can be made to make things safer, we do that. No, it's not repaving, it's really striping.
It's getting rid of the crosswalk.
Can we include getting rid of the crosswalk?
It's, it's, it's faded and doesn't look great in, in the.
As long as we come to an agreement.
Yeah. It's really just about refreshing it, because it's all, it's kind of faded and old, right? So it's going to be your main entrance. My recommendation, one of the things we talked about earlier, when Miss Drew's, Miss Drew's concerns about the condition of the road was, you know, we're probably going to be looking at asking the applicant to not just widen it, but to widen it and repave it. So you're going to wind up restriping at that point.
Well, we're talking about the intersection, we're not.
Oh, we're talking, I apologize. Hold on one second. Let me go back to 24. Oh, we're, I apologize, yes. I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about the, the access coming into the site.
No.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think there's a whole lot that's necessary there. But again, we're going to be cutting off that pedestrian access too, so we do need to look at creating some sort of safe harbor, because you don't want people coming across walk to a spot where now you're cutting off the access to the site. So we're going to need to look at that a little bit.
Look at it, so because it's the county.
Yeah.
Jurisdiction on it, they're going to have input on that. We'll have to meet with the county to do.
I, I'll write the condition at subject to the county's approval, then you'll work with the, with the township engineer.
25, the landscape plan about grass papers, we're willing to do, correct?
Correct.
And everything else is outside governmental agency approvals and the usual stuff. I think we can go to John Thomas's report.
Landscape report.
I will skip through. Number one, he says we've complied. Number two, wanna talk about the tree protection. We're, we're willing to show that area, correct?
Correct, yeah, we'll, we'll show tree protection fence. And I, I can touch on it in the next comment about, comment number three. There, there's gonna be no trees removed, and we agreed to adjust the soul fence in such a way that it would not impact the existing trees. Okay.
Existing trees being.
Correct, correct, right, along River Road, more specific.
Number four, words to my ears, comment no longer applicable. Same for number five. Six, buffers, again, no longer applicable. Seven, street trees. Trees should be removed in the vicinity of the building and moved away from the overhead lines to the north of the building. Better location would be outside of the basin berm at the south end of the site. We willing to do that and work with him?
Yes.
And, and those are the trees that are, I, I called it north, probably the east. These are the street trees that were proposed along the right-of-way that, that exist. There's no street tree. So my opinion is they're not necessary there, and they're actually not even feasible there because they're overhead wires. So we, we agreed, we, we, I spoke with the applicant's engineer this afternoon, kind of agreed those trees could, at least some of them could move to another location on the site where they would be of some benefit.
Number eight, we've complied or it's no longer applicable. Number nine has complied, and nine A has complied.
Nine, and nine B, we agreed to address.
And nine B will do, or it says house complied. Number 10, I think we've agreed.
So you agreed to under.
Nine B, nine B indicates that we added notes, but there were some comments regarding consistency with details, so we would agree to address that aspect of nine B.
Okay, so you're gonna add, you're gonna update the general notes so they, they conform with ours.
Correct. Number 10, we're willing to do, correct?
The number 10, there's a few different pieces, components to this. So we, we, we discussed this comment this afternoon as well, and I'll give my interpretation of where I think landed. We agree to, to work with Mr. Thomas to adjust the density of the plantings within the bio retention basin, which he can articulate it much better than, than I can. So I don't know if you want to just touch on that first, and then there's a second component to that, too.
Yeah, so the first, the first one, what he was mentioning is that there, the, proposed planting was generally consistent with the BMP manuals requirements. They have a stem count. However, the BMP manual also talks about coverage of the bottom of the basin at basically eighty percent when all is said and done. And the stem count really doesn't get you there. So it's a, in, in my opinion, it's a recommendation. So what we're gonna discuss is some reasonable approach to getting some more planting in the bottom of the basin, so that when it's inspected in the future, those have eighty percent. We're not kind of revisiting it or re, re-plant. So that's, that's that component, and I think we're, they've agreed to work with us on that.
That's correct. The next area we, it's indicated has complied and will update the note or modify the note regarding multiple cuttings during the first season and all that stuff. The next issue is the request for a freestanding hydrant near the basins. You want to touch on that?
Yeah, so our request is, so the, the request is to provide a freestanding crossproof hydrant adjacent to the basins to help water the plants and get established, establish the plant within the basins. The applicant agrees, is, is already agreed to the two-year guarantee of all the plants on site. Our preference would be just that we leave, we appreciate the recommendation, but leave the method of watering the plants and ensuring the healthy growth of the plants on site up to the applicant and how they see best, you know, at the time of construction to do that, whether it's your regular maintenance from the, the maintenance company, watering for establishment, irrigation, high yard hydrants, we'd just prefer not to have that locked in as a condition and just leave the watering and maintenance of the plants on site up to the applicant. It's discretion, because they are guaran, they are required to guarantee a two-year, two-year guarantee for the ordinance.
How critical is watering during the establishment period when plugs and smaller vegetation is used? Would it be, would it be beneficial to have access to the hydrant so watering's not so problematic?
I would say watering during establishment is critical, whether having a yard hydrant is the best approach to that, because there are other plants on site that need to be watered for establishment as well. There's, I've seen it done, you know, multiple different ways, whether it's, if there is irrigation ultimately proposed, you can do kind of a quick connect to help facilitate watering. Sometimes they, they use watering as part of the maintenance. If you get a dry spell, they'll actually water. So there's different methodologies to accomplish that. The applicant has to meet the performance requirement, so we're just requesting that. We appreciate the recommendation, but leave the kind of means and methods of that open to the applicant.
But i, in the past, you've recommended irrigation for vegetation establishment.
In, in the past, I've recommend, I, I always recommend that there be a method to water during the establishment period, not necessarily a permanent irrigation system. And the recommendation is simply to, you know, say, this is a much easier way to do it instead of dragging a hose across paved surface to access the area. I mean, I think that's, I'm not recommending an irrigation system. But again, it's a recommendation, is, it is up to the, you know, it is up to the applicant, the, how, how they want to accomplish it. But, but we're gonna be inspecting it and, you know, a, a, again, in the past, we've, we've, particularly in a sort of counterintuitive, that these natural bio retention areas with small plugs tend to dry out very quickly, and you lose a lot of material. So that's, that's, hence the recommendation.
And we appreciate the recommendation, but I, I think we'd like to keep that in our purview as to how to make sure that it gets watered and, and, you know, it, this isn't a, this is a self-storage facility that won't have a lot of traffic and a lot of concern if somebody for a short period of time or a longer period of time has to put a hose across the driveway and water it.
Is, is there a hose, will there be a hose bib on the build? Because again, we've, I've seen this, we've had, we've had projects that's like, and there's not even a hose bib on the building. And then it becomes a water truck issue. So that would be my, that would be the next best thing. I understand what you're saying about the, the use of this.
So.
We could.
Agree to water bits?
We, we could agree to provide a hose bib. We would expect that there would be.
On each side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with stormwater regulations, but if it dries out and we are now, right, that becomes problematic, hence the watering.
So it's not a, a requirement, and we appreciate the recommendation, but I think we, we can handle it the other way by making sure that there's water access to that side of the building to be able to make sure that the maintenance bond is the further protection, to make sure that everything grows.
Number 11, not applicable anymore.
Right. And I think in number, I'm sorry, I'm making sure I'm picking up number 10, because related to the planting in the basin, I had a comment when we spoke about this this afternoon, about the configuration of the infall and the outfall on the basin. So could you discuss that? And I've also had a conversation in the interim with, with Rakesh, but it is, I, I did comment on it here, so.
Sure, yeah, so there was a comment about the, the inflow and outflow of water in the basin, natural water, not irrigation or, you know, water added to, to supplement the growth. And my comment on that was, it's, it does, although it appears, and I'll just highlight on the exhibit basics here, so what the comment was, is that water enters, enters the basins in one location and then discharges the basins in another location. So just the way that these basins operate, those discharges only become engaged once the water actually reaches a certain level, because the whole concept of the basin is that water inflows to it during what we call the water quality storm, which is one and a quarter inch over a two-hour period in New Jersey DEP code. So water runs into the basin, it fills up, and we want to promote the water to infiltrate through the bio retention basin into the subsurface, into the underdrain and out, so it cleans the water. So during that period, when you have a light rainfall, there really is no outflow, it's through the basin bottom. So I was just trying to clarify that it's not really gonna kind of short-circuit and traverse right to the outfall, because there really is no outfall until you reach a certain threshold, and then the outlet structure actually is, is activated. So it's, it varies between each basin, but it's typically about, it's about six inches to a foot of water in that basin before you actually get a discharge. Does that, so, does that make sense?
And that's, and that's fine, and if I could ask, because, you know, I, I defer to Rakesh, and he's kind of the decider on these, on these issues, but if you had to confirm that.
Yeah, in, in, in short, that, that's, that's correct, the, the way that Mr. McKenna's describing it is correct. I think what, what John was saying is, is true in, in cases when you have a detention basin where there's a out, outlet at the basin bottom, the design methodologies, that you put the inflow on the far end, and that way the water has to traverse through the filtration and the vegetation to get to that outlet. But that's when you have a detention basin where the water's coming in, going out at the same elevation. In this case, the outlet is actually set higher up, so water actually has to fill, like, like Mr. McKenna was saying, water has to actually fill in the basin for about a foot or so, and then it leaves the basin. So the basin, with all the vegetation will actually serve to filter the stormwater.
So the whole issue here is just, we want to keep these plants alive.
Yeah.
The water isn't being retained for a certain period. We have a problem, and, and we've seen it. So this, this answer, this is all satisfied.
Okay.
So John, your note regarding the mowing, that still is applicable, correct?
Correct.
You agree?
Yes. The last issue is fencing. And it says the applicant's engineer has indicated that testimony will be provided with regard to the fencing.
There's a, there's two types of fencing proposed on site. The first is chain link fence. It's essentially exactly the same as what's out there today. A portion of the fence on the northern half of the site would actually remain, and we already previously discussed that. It will be extended to a point past the crosswalk. And then on the southern half of the site, we're simply just replacing in kind areas the portions of the existing fence that are being impacted by the proposed construction. The second type of fence is standard for BMPs and DEP, BMP manual. We're proposing just a post and rail fence around the perimeter of the basins, and that'll be post and rail with like a mesh fencing material over it.
Is there any conflict between the detention basin fencing and the exterior fencing?
Uh, no, no.
Is that all you need?
I, I think that's all I need. It was just a question on that lower part of the site, and it looked like the chain link was being retained in front of the detention basin fencing. And was it all that fencing? This was, this is an aesthetic issue, and was, was it necessary to overlap it? Or could you just clean it up by having the, and maybe I'm not, a, a, and there was a way to join the one for the other and eliminate kind of a double layer of fencing with a spacing? Maybe I wasn't interpreting where that, those fence locations were, frankly, so that's why I asked.
That's certainly something we would be willing to look at, to eliminate fence, if we have two fences in close proximity to each other. But, yeah, they're, they're maybe fifteen or twenty feet more so apart. And the one purpose of one fence is to, is to, well, the existing fence is really out there to keep pedestrians out of the county right-of-way and for security purposes, and the purpose of the bio retention basin fences is to keep folks out of the actual bio retention basin.
And that's fine. Well, let's, let's just take a look at it on the final plan, and it, it, it really applies to that lower corner of the site, lower of the building, so it's not a.
That's fine. I think that's it for everybody's reports, unless I missed some. Oh, well, I talked about Mr. Troutman's report, and I already agreed to do everything that he wanted to do, I think. Is there anything else that we need to do?
Just gonna look real quick here. The only thing I had was a, to increase that radius. Comes out the Old River Road from 15th to 20th, it's comment number 11 in the July 7th memo.
Sure, we would agree to do that.
That's it.
Okay. Okay, unless anybody else has any questions of our engineer, I'll call our planner out. Well, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody here from the public this evening who would have any questions for Mr. McKenna's testimony, and only his testimony? Step up to the microphone, identify yourself. Nope. You're being not, any, just make sure, any other board comments? I think we've all been anticipating. Okay.
Thank you.
I call.
Thank you.
Mr. Tykina forward. Mr. Tykina, can you give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Hi. My name's John Tykina.
Pretty good.
My name's John Tykina, and I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been, like, completing my studies at Rutgers University in 1992. I've spent the last thirty-two years doing this, testifying before planning and zoning boards across the state and around the country. I have applicants just like this, appear before more than 175 boards around New Jersey. I've been to your planning board, I've never been here.
Board of adjustment.
Excuse me, your board of adjustment, I've never been to your planning board, I've never been here.
Okay, you're acceptable to the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Your license is in good standing.
It is, 5298.
Why don't you tell the board what you did in terms of analyzing this site for purposes of the variances in design waivers that we're requesting, and what your opinion is?
Certainly, so I had an opportunity to review, obviously, the plans that were provided, all the reports, review your ordinance and your master plan as it relates to the site, and had the opportunity to visit the site on several occasions. In this instance, we need a few C, what are called C variances. In terms of our C variances, there are certain findings the board would need to make. First and foremost, that the variances relate to a specific piece of property. Secondly, that we advance some of the purposes of zoning. Third, that either we have a unique site condition that relates to this specific property that presents a hardship, such as we only have, you know, 4.899 acres, not the five acres that's required, because that's all the county left us when they took the rest of the land from us. And the fact that we have unlimited front yards, and we don't have anything else. So we have certain things that in your ordinance that can't be in front yards, but have to be on a site. So that presents somewhat of a hardship to us. Or that the benefits of granting the variance outweigh, outweighing the detriments that may be present by those variances. And that is a, a, a kind of a benefit detriment analysis that looks at the benefits of the overall project versus the detriments that are imposed by those variances. And the simple thing is, is it a better plan because we have the variances that we're, that we seek from a C2 standpoint? And then finally, with all of our variances, as you know, we need to satisfy the negative criteria. Are we gonna have a substantial detriment to public good? Are we gonna be harming the general public in some way? Are we gonna be detrimental to our neighbors? Or, and, and, and we cannot have a substantial impairment to your zone plan or your master plan. So what does your ITU zone talk about in terms of use? What does it talk about in terms of its, in terms of its standards? And does the relief that we're proposing, you know, so fracture those standards that it substantially impairs the zone? So first and foremost, this, this relief relates specifically to 116 River Road. No other property. It is this unique property with our, we keep calling it three front yards, is it three or four? All of our front yards, that's, that is our case. We're kind of left on an island out there between Old River Road, New River Road, and Bartles Corner. So it, you know, that's, that presents a unique challenge for us. it, you know, that's that presents a unique challenge for us. Any relief that you grant here doesn't convey any precedent to any other applicant. So again, everything has to stand on its own. And that is a critical component of any of your of any of your findings. So in terms of in terms of the variances that are requested, our lot area variance again is four point eight nine nine acres versus five acres. This is a C one variance to continue that existing condition. That's all. That's all the land that the county left us. Our front yard setback of fifty feet proposed for a hundred feet is required. That would be a C two variance. Where it is a bit of a hardship that all we have is front yards. But we had to make the best of of that bad situation. And when you do that, you kind of fall back into that C two criteria. In terms of parking, again, it's a better plan with sixteen spaces instead of sixty-four. That'll be a C two variance. In terms of our two loading berth versus five required again, that is specific to this use and the particular requirements of this use. So again, it's a better plan with two loading spaces. Then with five, that'll be a C two variance. Our loading location in the front yard, I'd submit to you that is a C one variance. The only place we can put anything outside the building is in a front yard. So by by definition, that is a hardship to us because we need certain elements to operate a site. Particularly a site for permitted use, but to operate any site, any of those things that are prohibiting in your ordinance from being in a front yard, particularly things in the I two district like loading, which you would totally expect to be here. That would be a hardship. So again, that's a C one variance. Our signage for our three wall signs totaling five hundred eighty-two square feet where one sign of a maximum of a hundred square feet is permitted. Again, that is a C two variance. And then finally, our lighting relief, we're receiving two point seven foot candles at the property line where a maximum point five is permitted. Again, that is at our that is at our driveway location. And again, that's a C two variance. It's a better plan because we have the right amount of lighting at our entrance driveway. It's interesting, you know, I've been I've been doing this for thirty-two years. I've written several ordinances back when I was a municipal planner back in in two thousand. And I'm actually proud to say they're still in effect today, twenty-five years later. They're still using them. But I made the same mistake. I had, you know, at the property line, we had to be zero point five or something like that. And you have to seek relief every time you go for for the driveway. You think we'd figure it out after after a few years. Um, so in terms of our positive criteria, again, I kind of hit them when I talked about them C one versus C two. We are permitted use. Our lot areas and existing nonconformity or setbacks are needed for functional circulation. We did make the best of a bad situation. We kind of called Old River Road our our minor front yard, if you will. And you know, that's where our fifty feet fifty foot setback is. And again, the unique condition there, we have the railroad. Then we have an industrial use behind. So we're not really having a negative impact at all on our neighbors or the general public. Our parking reduction again is, as Mr. Troutman's memo points out appropriately, I T is would be thirteen as the right number. We have sixteen. We think that's the right number. We're out on an island. We're not going to overflow to anybody else. We'll be in a good stead in terms of parking. These uses are extraordinarily low impact. Then you've heard that many, many times by the several self-storage facilities in town. So again, in terms of parking, we're much better off having the right amount of parking as opposed to having too much impervious surface, et cetera. Our loading relief, again, we have loading spaces that are appropriate for the types of trucks that are used to site. They're much they're much smaller trucks that were not to accommodate big fifty-three foot trailer. They're typical single unit trucks thirty feet below. And then in terms of our signage size, it is proportional to building scale. So your ordinance is like most ordinances where you permit five percent of the building of the building facade to be as your sign. And that's that's appropriate. I've seen them range anywhere from five percent up to fifteen percent. And that's appropriate. But then unfortunately, we all then put this cap on it. And your cap is a hundred square feet. I've seen caps as low as forty-eight square feet. And that just it doesn't work and it's inappropriate in terms of just a bigger building. So we have, we have, you know, a large building at one hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet that has relatively large facades that are all conforming in terms of all of your bulk standards, et cetera. But we're only we're proposing to have either on the long sides of the table, on the long sides of the building, two point three percent of the building covered at at one hundred and ninety-four square feet. And on the short side, which faces west, it's two point eight percent. So again, it's significantly below the five percent that is set forth in your ordinance. We're just above the hundred square foot cap that is imposing your ordinance. And I'd submit to you that when the signs are too small in a building, it kind of looks funny. And that's, you know, that's kind of a challenge, you know, when the kind of things get out of scale. And, you know, it's just better to have a sign that's kind of the right size for your face. I was relating to the team. I broke my nose when I was little and they fixed my nose and my mother will tell you today, forty-five years later, my nose is too small. So I think that it's 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 important to have something that's the right proportion. And we think the one hundred and ninety-four square feet certainly is that. In terms of how the sign breaks up, the word storage, self-storage, that's about a hundred square feet on the facade. And then the word rare and it is about a little over thirty square feet. The rest of it is kind of air of the box that we circumscribe around the words for the total of one hundred and ninety-four square feet. So again, we think it's tasteful. We think it's appropriate. I think it's appropriate, given that we have the three front yards and the three exposures that we have. And it's it's going to, it's really at the right size. And then lighting, we think in terms of lighting, we think the higher levels.
Can we just stick with the signage for a minute?
Sure. Because please interrupt me. I really, please.
I think I just did.
No, I could. I always I usually invite that at my beginning.
I get I get this. Clearly, you want the business to be identified. I understand that. Bartles Corner Road, certainly the long side of that building, I could see a sign. I could certainly see it coming up River Road. I don't see the need for the third sign facing the ball the ball fields.
The principal reason.
Advertising to the people coming to the ballpark.
No, the principal reason.
Right?
No, we're not.
I'm just trying to get you back into as close to the township ranks as as we can.
No, and and I I understand. The principal reason for the sign and what we're calling the west facade is that is our quote unquote front door. That is where the principal loading spaces in and the principal entrance in and out of the building is going to be. So that's kind of why we that's why we put put the sign there. And I agree that.
But they're already on your property, right? At this.
I concur.
Figured out where you are.
I concur, but I don't want to say it's architecture one-on-one, but it makes good sense to have a sign over your main entrance. It's kind of good. Good for your customers, good for all of it. And we think it's appropriate again, because we are on that facade at two point nine percent. So it's, you know, it's relatively small in relation to a relatively large facade.
We've just spent a lot of time on signs and regulations for signs. It's this kind of jumped out. There's a lot to.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Didn't they say earlier, I'm correct me if I'm wrong. They don't know who the client is that's going to be running this. So how do you even know what the signs are going to look like?
Well, refer and.
Because you're talking about the the lettering and what exactly the square footage of those letters are, but say extra space wants to come in and they have that big green sign and they want to put that up.
Well.
How's that work?
Well, it would work one of two ways. Either extra space would be happy with one hundred and ninety-four square feet on three facades. Or they come back before you and have to make their own case. And you you'd see what the what the case is. In this instance, again, we proposed a sign that is in proportion to the facade that is there.
Is is it also a function of the way the roadway and the traveling public goes around the building? If you take a look at it, somebody traveling on River Road, when they're driving up to the site, they're seeing the side of the building that you follow the chairman wouldn't would have a sign, but as they go around the front wouldn't have a sign. And then you would only have another sign on the other side, but it the way the road travels, you really need a sign on each side of the building in order for it to be visible.
Correct. The the unique exposures that we have, and given that you can come to the site from several different directions and and directions that are significant roadways. It's not like, you know, one is an A and a B.
You're really coming at it from two directions, right? You're coming up River Road or you're coming east or west on Bartles Corner Road. It's that third side that I'm questioning.
And and I understand.
Who's seeing that? But the people parked at Diamond Nation, and that's not your audience, right?
That's agreed. It's it again, it's it's there principally because that's the main entrance. That's putting it over the main.
Well, I mean, there's other ways to deal with it. Cut the building on a forty-five and there you have one sign. But my point is like.
Well, we typically wouldn't, we wouldn't take G L A out to to satisfy that. But again, we think we think the way we propose it is appropriate, and we're going to listen to the we're going to listen to what the board says. We're going you know, we're going to listen to you and you're going to tell us what you think and we'll respond accordingly. I'm certain of that.
I think we had asked earlier this evening, and we were waiting for this testimony on the sides. Is there any mockup that you have?
Yeah.
You know what? That's good. I'm going to put the one to you.
What you're handing out was previously submitted and marked into evidence, correct?
Correct.
There are A five. Thank you.
This is from their December twenty twenty-three meeting. So this was already marked as an exhibit.
Why don't you describe the the A four and A five in terms of the scale and mass of the signs in relationship to the building?
Certainly. So looking at A four and A five, and I guess A four is is perspective west from west of River Road. And this shows really the north side of the building on the left, which was faced Bartles Corner and then the west side of the building that would face Diamond Nation. So again, it shows that in terms of overall scale of the building, they don't look out of place. They're not, they're at one hundred and ninety-four square feet on a hundred and twenty-seven thousand square foot building. They're not very large at all.
Talk about the lighting on these. I can't tell looking at it.
You know what? I can't tell either. Yeah, no. So to be internally internally illuminated individual letters.
There's no details. This is this is just schematic.
Correct. This is the schematic. Then referring to A five, that would show what we're talking about from perspective view south. So you have the south side of the building on the right, which you'd be looking at coming up from River Road. And then again, the left side is the west side of the building that would face Diamond Nation. And again, you see that in terms of overall scale, they're in relatively good proportion.
None of this parking in the picture is here anymore, right? It's in this area is here anymore, right? That was all taken out?
Correct. That was all taken out. The only parking that remains is parking along the west side of the building and then the four parallel spaces along the east side of the building.
As as you're traveling along River Road, if this sign on the front was missing or on the side was missing, would the building look out of place?
I think so. I mean, again, I think we're used to we're used to having a sign on facades that face streets. That is that the norm, your ordinance is interesting that for a single user building, you only get one, no matter how many front yards you have. But for a multi-user building, you get more than one. And again, it's appropriate that that you would have you would have signs that, you know, that face, you know, every direction. And again, in terms of of scale on a hundred and twenty-seven thousand square foot building, this amount of signage is not is not unreasonable to put it. And again, to put it in different scale. And only because I I worked for them around the country. And a use that is relatively nearby that you're familiar with, that's a little bigger, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand square foot Costco. Each of those signs is five hundred and ninety square feet. So it is, and there's probably three of them on the on the building that's over there that are all five hundred and ninety square feet. So again, on these large buildings, getting hung up on a on an actual square footage, it's more appropriate to look at it in terms of size and scale relative to the facade that it sits on.
We really think that having the three signs is is appropriate in in terms of the percentage of the sites of the building and given the configuration of the roadway. We're requesting the board's agreement on the variance relief with respect to those three signs, because if you look at that exhibit, I think it's it's appropriate in terms of size and scale. And it's a very unique piece of property and a unique size of the building. It would look look out of place if those signs were any smaller.
And they are a significant distance from the from the roads. I mean, from Bartles Corner, we're probably over, you know, over two hundred plus feet to that road from our entrance at the south end on River Road, we're over three hundred feet. And again, we have the full hundred feet on River Road to the west. So again, we have substantial setbacks and distances there to address for each of them.
Hey, I get your argument. I I'm trying to think about what's the brightness of this. That's why I was asking you how these things look.
Well, they'll be internally illuminated. And again, letters like that are typically, you know, a halo light where it's literally just behind it, just behind it. I think if, you know, looking at them, they're not white. And if the board were to make that a condition that the letters not be white, that's probably a good condition to make sure it's not too bright.
I think the main concern, at least from my point of view, I was wondering the same thing. Is you don't want it to be distracting to the drivers. I mean, you want to draw their attention, but not so much that it's distracting and causing someone to be here off the road.
No, and I think with this, particularly with this color scheme, it certainly does not do that.
Is there no monument signs like?
None.
You know, like the land ones that.
None.
Wouldn't that be better? Then you can have one.
Well, we actually, we actually think given the exposure of the building, the building itself can be designed and it's and it's and we think it's appropriate the way we've laid it out.
But from a wayfinding, that's a good thought. I mean, at this point, people how are they going to know where? How do you know that that's the driveway for the property? Well, there's no sign proposed at that driveway entrance.
That is correct. Again, I think you'll we're typically directed by our by our directions and our and our wayfinding that's, you know, on the dashboard of our car. And then and then beyond that, it's these are going to be, you know, tenants. So once you find it the first time, you're.
There's there's also, we don't own the property by the entrance. So we can't.
Along the road where a sign could be put in that said the name and then next left or next right depending from what I'm just people are going to blow inside that driveway because they're not going to know where to turn.
And a hundred hundred square feet is allowed for a ground sign.
Yeah.
So.
In addition to what's on the building? Yeah. Or instead of what's on the building?
Yeah, for a component in addition. Yeah.
Maybe. I mean, I agree the one over the entrance. I I do think the one over the entrance makes sense, even though the entrance is facing that way. I think you might be better off to have like just that one in a ground sign or like, I don't see how this is a variance that is necessary when there's other ways to solve it. Well, I mean, I guess. Well, I mean, I guess I understand aesthetically you don't want it, but that's not a reason for a variance, I don't think. Although I don't hope so.
From me from an aesthetic standpoint, again, I think having appropriately scaled sign that's between two and 5% is better than having limiting it to 100 100 square feet. That would be, you know, 1%. Again, I think we'd be too small on the facade. It kind of looked funny.
But then you're also proposing three where one is permitted.
Correct, because there are three distinct views and exposures on the site. Again, we have north to Bartles Corner. We have south to River Road and we have west over the main entrance.
True, but your front of your building is going to be the one with your entrance.
Better answer.
The front of the building is the one with the entrance that you're saying is the front door. So why would you want it on the sides? I mean, I guess I understand you want a billboard where you are, but is it necessary?
But when you're coming in the entrance road, you want a sign on the entrance road part and where the front door is. So maybe you don't need the third one that faces 523 because that's really redundant. But if you feel like it's a concession to say, take that one side off and then put your saying directional signage.
Yeah, I I think the problem with the directional signage, if you look at the site plan, is there's a big site easement right along the front of the property. So it limits where you could put a site plan, a monument sign to that detention base.
Where are you proposing?
So could a monument sign, if you put your site plan where the site easement ends now heading towards Bartle Barnes. That's Bartle's corner. Yeah.
That's Bartle's corner.
Yeah. Right where the brown ends, right across from the driveway to Diamond Nation.
Why would you put it there?
Because people that have made the turn are now a directional sign and say driveway next left. If you're heading south, if you're heading south.
We're we're sitting here trying to design it for them to make it work. And if they don't want to make it work, they don't want to make it work. So.
Well, we absolutely want to make it work. Let's let's.
No, I mean, we have to want to make it work. Restrictions, I'm saying is not make it work. I mean, obviously it's either a variance or not.
Right. And and what we're requesting, which we're allowed to do under the municipal land use law is under these unique circumstances because of the size of the building and because of the multiple road frontages and because of the uniqueness of this situation, that it's better to have a slight deviation to allow an addition, the additional signage and the additional area. And it is because of what Mr. Taquina testified to in terms of the percentage, usually it's a 5% on a face and we're actually at less than 3% on each, two and a half percent on each, that this is an appropriate signage for this type of use on this type of building in this configuration. And we're not asking for a monument. We're not asking for a monument sign, which would have been an additional signage, because I don't think that would be appropriate, given the site easement and the way that the 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 road travels around the outside of the building. So we think it's an appropriate signage and very minimal under the circumstances.
We can discuss it once they've done their planning testimony.
I can't hear you.
We can discuss this as a board when you're done your planning testimony.
Yes.
Certainly. And I but I appreciate you discussing it with us as well. So many boards just let me go right through and don't say anything. So it's a it's nicer to know what you're thinking about.
Do you have any anything else to testify with respect to deposit criteria on all the variances in design?
Certainly. Let me let me wrap up here. So in terms of the municipal land use law purposes that we'd advance, I submit to you there are three G5 sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses in accordance with their environmental requirements. I to promote a desirable visual environment through good civic design and arrangement. And M to encourage the coordination of the various land use procedures affecting development with a view towards less than the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of the land. Again, we think the site is appropriate in terms of its location. It's permitted use in the district. We think we are provide it provides for sufficient space for the overall improvement. We comply with your building and impermeable coverage limits and but for our one front yard setback, or if your setback and FDR requirements, we are meeting all the environmental requirements in terms of stormwater in terms of, you know, provide for the appropriate water treatment with the two bio retention facilities. We do think is it a it is quite frankly, one of the more attractive self-storage buildings that I've seen. And it's, you know, it's certainly going to be an improvement over a vacant overflow parking lot. And then and we think that this this is another application that really shows all the various hurdles you need to jump through, whether it be county soils, it's stormwater, et cetera. And the applicant has done that very well, done in a way that's cost effective. And in a way that we think is providing for a high quality development. So when you put all those things together, it is certainly an efficient use of the land, even though we're below the 40% total coverage for the district. This is a unique use that allows to provide for a good return for the property, but can be done so with very, very, very few external impacts. Those very few external impacts take me nor negative criteria. Again, we're not going to have any substantial detriment to public good. Provide for nice buffers all the way around the building. Our parking supply is adequate. It's not going to spill anywhere else. Loading and operations are minimal. You know, the building is going to fill over the course of its first year and then it's going to sit there full for the next 30. Tenants check in. They rarely check out. And you typically will show very good, very good occupancy and over the time. So again, it's a very, very low impact use. Our lighting is controlled. On the site, it'll be very low impact and it's a low impact use overall. On terms of your zone plan, again, the use is permitted in the district. The relief that we're seeking relates specifically to the site and to the unique characteristics of this use being less intensive than your typical I two use. So we need less loading. We need less parking and those things that that's some of the relief that we're seeking. We are seeking the signage relief again, because of the unique condition of the site with our multiple exposures. We're certainly willing to listen to the board in terms of your suggestions for what you think the appropriate level of signage and and will work to coordinate that with you. And it supports township state of policy of directing growth into service non-residential areas to permit additional non-residential commercial and commercial development, limiting route to existing sewer and roadway capacities to sit existing site within your sewer service district with the on two county roads. It's going to provide for good access and to preserve preserve farmland and open space elsewhere by again, directing your non-residential development into these service commercial areas. So for all those reasons, I believe you have the ability to make the requisite findings to grant the relief requested available for any additional questions.
Yeah. In your testimony, you talked about the aesthetically pleasing nature of the proposed development. But as I recall in testimony, the applicant doesn't know who's going to build this and what color scheme they're going to provide and what color or lighting. So you're not affirming that these are the colors that we will get when this building is built. You're just.
That is that is correct, but but it would be appropriate and Mr. Troyell could certainly chime in on this that it it needs to be consistent with what is with what has been represented. So if if an applicant comes in and they don't have the tripartite division where they have a masonry base, a differentiated middle of the building and a cornice line at the top that doesn't have the specific corner treatments and the specific entry treatments, that's not going to be consistent with this approval. And they're going to be forced to come back to you and and have to reappear before you. And do not underestimate the power of that hammer that your that your staff is going to is going to carry. They're going to say, well, you can match pretty close to what's this and make me happy or you can go back to the board and spend a year as opposed to a month. And it's a very powerful tool for your staff to be able to utilize to get some to make sure that you get something that is consistent with A four and A five.
I I just, we have, we at one point had the really ugly, I shouldn't put it that way, but in my opinion, the orange self-storage building with the lighting and yeah. Right. The most recent one that was approved aboard of it. Yeah. And we got commitments on color schemes.
What is extra space? Was an extra space just here? Are they here with this?
The one doing I'm talking about was a while ago. That was orange.
Because there was one like two weeks ago. So that must have been worth it. That was extra space.
But but we also got one that's a barn.
And again, the the asset class is one that can support. It doesn't need investment in its facade. But it's fortunately an asset class that can support it. So you are not building this? You're seeking approval for plans and then yeah, and then someone else is going to build it?
Yeah, there's going to be an ultimate user that is going to, it's going to be built in accordance with this. My recollection of the testimony was that the exact color scheme of the we may not know, but the basic color scheme of the base of the building will be that. But the exact color scheme will be up to the ultimate user.
Right. So if you were to bring in a user, you'd say, okay, your base color scheme, you know, you have the base earth tones in your in your stone base in some of your architectural elements, maybe some of the highlighting details might be the thing that comes forward.
What I'm thinking the easiest thing to do would be to add a condition where the colors would be earth tones, subject to the final approval of the board's professionals. I don't think applying check would be appropriate.
In terms of the building, that's probably okay. Again, signage and signage and branding details would be the things that might vary from.
When you say with the building, yes, what would he, what is your intent to exclude the signage? Signage and.
The signage may not be earth tone, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. So that's your intent when you said the building, in your mind, you were excluding the color scheme of the sign.
Correct.
Color scheme of the sign and.
The logo or whatever they might have.
And, you know, I could see certain users, they have certain accent colors that are that are consistent with their branding.
So I get the branding. It's the. Is there a way for them to find out more information than before final presented?
That we would go with the condition that was suggested by Mr. Mr. Toriello.
If you guys are.
I mean, it's going to be a discretion if. Look, to the extent that that the board is not satiated with, you know, concerns of the sign, that goes back to the conversation you're going to have to have as to whether or not you're going to grant the relief requested with with respect to the sign.
Any other questions for?
We should open it up to the public too, if there's anybody here from the community.
Yeah, whatever, whatever they should.
Might have questions on Mr. Taquina's testimony now would be the time to do so. Okay.
Just want to recall briefly, Mr. McKenna on the ground sign issue.
Can I just ask a question real quick? By granting, this is only preliminary, right? So does that mean that when they do go for final, that comes in front of us again, or that just gets approved by Jeff or the zone to office?
In order for us to, we have to come back before you on final approval.
There's going to be another, but we don't presentation. We don't get another shot of this. Well, that's the variance stuff. Yeah.
That it's you. You review the application to make sure that we've complied with all of your conditions of preliminary approval.
So to get at what I think you're, any issues that this board has, the conditions need to be called out today.
Okay.
If that's where you go, we cannot do it at a later date. Today is the day.
So you heard the conversation regarding the possibility of a ground mounted sign in lieu of the third building facade signage. What's your analysis with respect to that capability?
Yes, I just wanted to add a little bit of testimony here because ground signs are something that we evaluated for this project. So I don't want to. I didn't want to present that it wasn't considered. So as was previously noted, the area in Brown, it's kind of a brown hatch along the River Road frontage, frontage west of the building is a is a sightline easement. So we're not permitted to propose any signage in that area. We would be permitted to propose signage north of that area. However, I would like to note that the the max sign height permitted is 10 feet, 100 square feet area. To provide a line of sight to Bartles Corner Road. So Bartles Corner Road actually sits like if you're looking at the area kind of center of our frontage on Bartles Corner Road, that area sits approximately 10 feet above the area I just identified as potential location for a monument sign. So you wouldn't really be providing any benefit. You you would actually be sitting above the top of the sign in your car coming down south, you know, towards Flemington on Bartles Corner Road. So that location, we really don't feel is advantageous and or a benefit rather. And then furthermore, as was previously noted, we do not control the area near near the what is really functionally our access point is near the southeast corner of our site along the old River Road right away. However, the more practical point where I think folks are are focusing on is the intersection between Old River Road and current River Road, which we don't actually control that area where we can't propose a monument sign there. So again, the only we really feel that we're limited on the locations of a beneficial monument sign. We didn't really feel that one exists that would provide a benefit, which I really think further promotes the you know, regular nature of this of this location and supports the the request for the variance for the additional sign. We really functionally could provide a sign, but it wouldn't really benefit in our opinion. So we really feel that the building sign is is more of a benefit to offset that detriment that we're we're dealing with with the the shape and topography of the site. So I just wanted to clarify that we did look at it. Those are some of the challenges.
Yeah, just a clarification now that the exhibit that we were provided on second page of it, I don't know which A it is. The location of that sign is the towards the rear or the railroad of the property. But your site plan that was submitted and your signage plan shows that sign being in the front of the building. So which are you asking for? Because they're they're conflicting locations. C302, which is your signage plan? Yes. And then the correct that one, the exhibit that you have in your hand.
I'll just clarify the locations of the signs. So there's there's one sign located proposed in the center of the western facade facing River Road. There's one sign proposed on the northern facade facing Bartles Corner Road. And there's one sign proposed on the southern facade facing River Road to the south.
Yeah, that's not what your exhibit, this exhibit. So your signage plan shows the it shows that sign towards the front corner.
Okay, so you're you're correct. It is slightly. Okay, so you're you're correct, it is slightly based on the elevation of the building, it's a little bit further to the east, but it is on that same facade, so you're. You're correct, on our site plan, the arrow points closer to the western portion of the building. So if that fair point, but yes, it is on. This other facade.
And the window display is only on the west, or I'm sorry, on the east side. Of the units.
The window display.
On the architectural plan, it it shows that there's a window display showing all the interior units.
I think the win. I think the window display that's being referenced, it would be the. We're showing the site facing Diamond Nation to the to the east to. Storefront entry area, I think I think that's what you're referring to.
No, there's a, if you go on the on the on the east, there's another, I believe it's another storefront. And then there's window display. I don't think I don't think it's on this schematic.
Yeah, that.
You were asked about, you were asked about the signage. Towards the rear of the building on, I guess that's A five. That's where the people actually drive in towards the site on that area, correct?
Correct.
The idea of having a signage there was to provide identification as people drive into the site on that area, correct?
Correct, yeah, we can update the label on C three oh two to better reflect that. Yeah, I understand.
There's no sign on that side.
There is no sign facing the. East.
The east, but there's an entry on that side.
Correct.
And if if a future tenant wants future display on any of the other sides that could affect a sign, they would have to come back, correct?
We're we're not proposing any signage on that side of the building, we're only proposing signage on. The three sides identified and Ms. Drews is correct that the one is towards the rear. As opposed to being in the center where the other sides were. But it's not facing the what we'll call the rear of the building.
Jeff, you're saying there was a window wall, like those other self-storage things where it looks like the glass, but the doors.
They have one on the east side, it's not on one of the schematic drawings, but they have one on.
On the architectural.
On the on the architectural, yes.
That faces the railroad.
Yes. So I don't know in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's strange, because usually that's meant for an advertising.
To, yeah, to say, hey, look, this is what we are.
Yeah. Thus decreasing a sign size potential.
Yeah, we're not proposing any signage on that face. So if anybody wants to, they'd have to come back before the board.
So are we counting the window wall thing as a sign or not a sign? Is that part of it or not part of it?
I mean, it hasn't been viewed as one.
Okay.
In the past, there's other applications that it hasn't been.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
That would conclude our testimony. I'd like to sum up if you have the opportunity to. I think we've beaten everything kind of to a dead horse, except for maybe the sign issue, which I do want to address, because that seems to be the the main issue. I think the side of the building would look silly if you didn't have a sign on there. And I don't think, I think Mr. McKenna's testimony with respect to the in unfeasibility of the ground mounted sign is persuasive. And we want to have site identification, it's a huge building in relationship to signage ordinance, and that's why it's unique. We we think it's appropriate. We have worked with the board and its professionals to try to come up with the best project here, and your major concern in the beginning was stormwater. And the traffic coming from. The safety of pedestrians going from the site for the overflow pork parking onto Diamond Nation. We've agreed to address that by removing that overflow parking and that impervious coverage. And to make this a safer situation for the traveling public. We've agreed to the condition dealing with the overall parking standard to increase additional parking in the future. I think as a result of this combined effort. It's appropriate to grant relief in order to bring this project to fruition, and if that means granting. The sign variance that I know you spent a lot of time implementing sign variance. Overall, this project calls for the ability to have some relief, particularly with respect to signage. Which I think is really the only major remaining issue that was of a concern from the board. We would ask that you grant the preliminary approval subject to the conditions that we've all discussed.
Am I allowed to comment still?
Yeah. You have other discussions from any of the board.
I just think if. When it comes to the signage thing, if you want it on three sides of the building, you should have made them smaller than to accommodate at least. Getting it closer.
Yeah, like if you took one sign and divided that, I mean. One.
There's a reason.
One thing that we could discuss as a board and see if we have a general feeling for where we'd like to land on the signs and. As our attorney solicitors suggested, we could do a straw poll and just see where people are landing. On it, we we do that on Board of Adjustment all the time to get to get everybody like. Kind of the feel for where folks are on that variance. If someone wants to make a suggestion, I mean, I think the things that we have to think about with the signs. And and the building in general are the color scheme, which was brought up and how we want that. To be reflected. The number of signs and size of the signs. And the lighting of the signs that that, you know, we don't want, so my initial thought is. I understand the mass and scale of the building and. I'm willing to compromise or or, you know, consider. Maybe two signs that are at the larger size, but I still think the one facing Bartle's corner. What if it was 100 square feet and it just complied, it's basically just helping people understand where the building is. So when they turn around the corner, they, you know, then are using the other big signs as the bigger. I, you know, that's just, that's just one thought, I mean, if others have another suggestion about what we could consider.
Well, they don't want to consider that, they don't want us to consider that.
Well, no, then we we could, we can deny their variance then on the science. So we have the ability to just pick that one out and say, yes or no, right, Solicitor?
That's correct. You can, you can, you can either deny the request as it is, or you can, or you can offer a modification and approve it that way. Since the ball is in your court.
All those other ones that they're asking that they're asking for, so there's the size of the lot, there's. The size of this versus the size of the lot is gonna be. Significant, it's forty, almost forty feet tall, so.
So are there other variance requests that are at contention here, or is it only the signage?
I'll chime in, I'm good with the other variances, it's just the signage. I have a problem.
Well, I actually, I'm gonna disagree, I don't have a problem with the three signs, the signs on the three sites, especially. Bartle's corner, because that's a higher speed road. So I think it's important to have a sign that you could read at a higher speed. And in my opinion, it really does kind of have three faces, so if you, what, whether you're going either direction on River Road, I can understand. Wanting to have signage that people can see from both directions and from Bartle's Bartle's corner. And I agree with appropriately, I'm gonna use air quotes here, appropriately sized signage for the size of the building, but that's a pretty vague term, I realize that, there's a lot of leeway there. And everybody's gonna have a different opinion about what appropriately sized is. I do have concerns about lighting, about how bright it is, as I mentioned before. What else, what was your other point about signs?
Colors.
Yeah, yeah, I do have concerns about colors, I know it's nitpicking and I don't like to be that guy, but, you know, we have kind of dug our toes in over. Do, or I should say to prevent gaudy color schemes. But it does feel kind of nippy, but it does make a difference. So, but my main point is I don't have a problem with the three signs, mainly because I think it has three fronts, and I think they have a fair point that. It's important to see it from all angles that you're coming from. I think that's reasonable.
I agree with James, I don't, three signs on the sides, and then if I look at other buildings around here is. Retailers have all four sides, three yard big.
That's nothing.
And I can see the distraction off thirty one. Oftentimes on lights, the signs that are lit up in are bigger, so I think you have to. This color schematic looks visually appealing, it's not distracting, it's not distasteful. I don't, I don't have a problem with three signs, three sides.
I agree with you, Glenn, on the colors, I'd go back to what Joe summarized here a few minutes ago about how he reported this. Well.
Well, again, the proposed condition that I had the applicant agreed to with respect to the building in terms of keeping it in earth tones. Subject to the final approval of the board professionals. The problem here is there is a variance relief that sought for signage. We don't know what the sign is gonna be, you don't have all of the information. You don't know if it's gonna be purple because. The applicant who acquires the property, they have to have a purple sign because that's their, that's their brand, and maybe if it was an earth tone. He'd be inclined to grant the variance for the larger, but you wouldn't be inclined to do it if it's purple. So, you know. In some respects, the relief sought is almost premature because you don't have all of the facts.
The other issue is the what the building looks like, if they're not the ones building it. It's basically, maybe it'll look like that, I mean, yes, we can specify certain colors and stuff, but you can't tell them, you know, you have to have. Masonry of the first floor and then beyond that, because.
Well, there are, there are plans, there is, there is an actual plan that you're that you're approving, so I don't think they can deviate. And 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 build something that wasn't put before this board for approval, you're, you've got architectural plans, that that's what you're approving, so. That is the building that they're, that they're.
Yeah, if they were to apply for a zoning permit and presented something else, I would deny it and they would have to come back.
Okay, so there is like a check there.
Yeah.
Is my point.
There is, there is.
And we're. And we're adding the extra check by talking about earth tones, the problem is with respect to the color of the sign. Certain companies may need, their brand may dictate that it has to be a certain color.
I mean, the other thing is that the sign presented, it's it's, it was one hundred and ninety-four square feet and it's rareton and self-storage, it could. Look completely different, I mean, the same square footage, but it could be.
Right, so you can't really.
Yeah, a logo.
On the lighting of the signage, is it lit or backlit?
I think he was, he specified halo lighting, so it's backlit kind of, and it lights around it. I said. I'm sorry, what?
Internally illuminated.
They were internally illuminated, same with channel letters.
Yeah, he had said. Halo lit, so I thought that meant like, it's like backlit so that you get the.
No, I think internally illuminated is what they said, so that is not the halo thing.
Okay.
Basically, in the each letter, the channel letter on its own, and it has a lighting element inside.
Inside of the.
Yeah, and I think, I think if the if the lighting is a concern to the board. You can put as a condition that the applicant will work with the engineer to establish an appropriate candle, is it foot candle, how how do you refer to that? Whatever the, and then, you know. You can have some control over that. I think the issue is the coloring.
Well, the issue is not knowing what the sign's gonna be, because you don't know who's gonna be building it.
Well, a straw vote, what do you, what do your, I mean, everybody kind of, if 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 people aren't. If people still want three signs, then. We'll, but we need to hear what you guys think about the number of signs.
Well, I can't vote, so.
Oh.
I just give my opinions.
I'm okay with three.
Okay.
So it looks like, okay. Okay. You're okay with three, are you okay with the sizing, because that's a separate variance. Now the size of the sign.
I'm actually surprised that our ordinance is by a square footage, given that it doesn't necessitate a scale, so. You know, that's where I was kind of like.
Well, the square footage is a cap. It's five percent of the building or whatever, but then it's also a cap of. Yeah.
Everybody wrote down things to revise, ordinances to revise.
Yeah, for, this is only for single tenant structures, for multi-tenant structures, it's just the scale.
Yeah, then it doesn't go to like. As restrictive.
If we're all chiming in, I don't think the scale of what they've represented here, not that that's what it's gonna be, I don't think it's it's bad. Getting the side of the building, size of the building.
I agree, I think it's, I think it's an appropriate and reasonable sign size, I guess you could say. No, based on the drawing, or sorry, just say, based on the rendering presented, whatever you want.
Just the colors, we.
We can.
I don't, nobody had any issue with the size of the lot, that was the one, and parking thing, that's another. But the parking thing was because. Didn't, okay, Jay had said that. It should be calculated as thirteen.
Parking is based on a warehouse standard, the ordinance they had to apply warehouse standard, which has nothing to do with this use. So we went in and did looked at all the research for this use.
Okay.
And so you have, you have an appropriate amount of parking based on a self-storage use.
So that makes sense.
Yeah. So the, it sounds like maybe the additional conditions. That are emanated from our discussion like Joe started with was the color scheme. And that the board would like to review. Boards professionals review and approve the final lighting design and lighting standards. For the building.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
For the signs.
Yeah, but again, the color scheme is just for the bill.
Just for the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, can I just clarify? What is the mandatory number of off-site parking spaces that need to be constructed with a final CO before the applicant can pull?
I am going to go through every single condition and waiver as part of the motion, I have all, I have, I have all of my notes done.
Okay.
Okay, just. I think we're ready, just, I just wanted, just for the facade, does that include the the units, the color of the units? Yeah, the doors unless.
Everything.
Okay.
Yes.
I would think the doors count as the part of the building.
It's all part of the color scheme, yes, so they can't be orange doors and say it complies. That was such an ugly self-storage. That was such an ugly self-storage.
No, rendering wise, this one's actually rather nice.
Okay, so the relief requested is set forth in the Township Planner's Report dated July 3, 2025, specifically 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, as well as Jessica Caldwell's report, item 15A. Design waivers called out in Ms. Caldwell's report, 15B, lowercase i, double i, triple i, in the Board's Engineer Report of paragraph 2, as well as candle light level 2.7 by the driveway entrance. Condition of approval is set forth in Mr. Vacarello's report dated July 3, items 16, 23, 24, 25, 31, 33, 34, 35, and number 3 in Mr. Vacarello's report dated April 17, 2025, which I will include the specific number of 533 parking spaces. A condition, the certificate of occupancy for the new parking spaces must be issued prior to construction commencing for any approval this board grants. Also, conditional approval, Engineers' Report, items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17. And I'm going to just do a general regarding stormwater, which covers paragraphs 18 through 22, as well as paragraphs 24, 25, and 26. Landscape Architect Report, items 7 and 9B. And we added the additional condition of hose bibs in both the front and rear of the property. Recycling Coordinator Condition, yearly reporting by February 15. Fire Marshal Report dated March 4, 2025, conditions 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9. Also, the condition that the applicant will work with the Board Engineer regarding a level of light for any signs and will amending to retain jurisdiction to, to ensure that once it's constructed that it, it, to verify that it's as contemplated. That the building will be constructed and limited to earth tones, subject to the final approval of the board professionals. And I think I got everything. Hello, jump in if I miss anything. Oh, yes, I did forget that. Okay. And that the applicant will continue the fence to block the pedestrian pathway and, and proceed to, I guess, a level to the satisfaction of the Township Planner.
John Morgan Thomas, what, John Morgan Thomas, what conditions did you have? Sorry.
I called out 7 and 9B. And the hoses, which was not in the report, the hose bibs, that was not in the report. That was as a result of discussion.
Yeah. But being that we don't know what the front and rear of the building is, it's the north and the south base.
Okay, I'll add that.
Yeah, number, and number 12 was also to the satisfaction of the, the fencing issue would be resolved.
Oh yeah, the like landscape and fence thing with the southern thing, the southern.
The two fences around, that's, it's a number 12 in his report. Yes. Yes, to increase the plant density. So, so the resolution is with, with other conditions discussed during the testimony that may need to be further clarified.
I, I've added it. I got it.
He's giving us a little wiggle.
Mr. Grover will correct me where I make my mistakes. Okay, we'll work together. So that's the motion.
That summary. Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion to approve Domination LLC's preliminary site plan.
Motion.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairman, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu?
Yes.
Mr. James Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski? Mr. Joseph Lane?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate working here with you and board professionals. I appreciate all their review and coming up with a better project. It's always the goal.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Release me.